I'd like to call our meeting to order and invocation by Pastor Capizzi, followed by the pledge by our Vice Mayor.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, that you are the supreme sovereign God of all creation. Lord, we look to you, Father, for the ability for this meeting tonight to have order, that it be civil, that, Father, we are graced with to one another. Lord God, that there are all things will be accomplished according to your purpose, Father. Lord, let there be wisdom, discernment, insight, knowledge, that in all the decisions that are made tonight, I pray that the the audience would be mindful of their their order as well, Lord. We thank you, Lord, that we can pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Let's face the flag, the pledge of belief. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, City Clerk, roll call, please. Here.
Mr. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Malick.
Here. All right, we'll start off with a special presentation recognizing the Cocoa Beach Fire Department for their Chili Fest fundraiser donating funds to sponsor the June 2023 Space Coast Honor Flight. And the department is sponsoring six guardians and the flight medic for the June flight. And the department is a three spons- three star sponsor over the years donating over $10,000 to the Space Coast Honor Flight. And Deputy Chief Justin Grimes, take it away.
Thank you, sir. Good evening and thank you, Commission, for the ability to speak tonight. Justin Grimes, Deputy Chief of the Cocoa Beach Fire Department. I'd like to start and thank the city of Cocoa Beach, the commissioners, the art show, for always supporting our Chili Fest event. A lot of times, you guys may not know where we end up donating money. It goes to a lot of different places. Sometimes when we have accidents, we try to support what happens after when we can't support. Obviously, after during COVID with the food drive, things like that. But one of our biggest benefactors and largest recipients is the Space Coast Honor Flight. In the past, we've purchased things such as FAA compliant AEDs, basic life support bags and equipment besides donating money. This year, we're providing and sponsoring the cost of six members to work as guardians on this year's June flight. I'd like to introduce Christine Tate, who can explain a little bit more about how Honor Flight works. And there's also pamphlets there for you guys in front of you to take a look at.
Hi, I'm Christine Tate and I'm one of the board members. I'm the fundraiser. And this is Marsha Lambert. She's also been a board member and she helps us out with all the flights. Oh, sorry. Can you hear me better now? So I'm Christine Tate and I'm with Space Coast Honor Flight. I'm a board member. I'm a fundraiser. And this is Marsha Lambert. She's also a board member, has been and also helps out with Honor Flight. So Space Coast Honor Flight started in 2010. And the idea of Space Coast Honor Flight, this is actually Honor Flight is a nationwide organization to honor our veterans. Years ago, in the eighties and nineties, they didn't have the World War II monument. By the time they had that monument, our veterans who were World War II didn't have the capability of making it up on their own to see their monuments and be honored. So that's where Honor Flight came about. So Space Coast Honor Flight started in 2010 with one trip and then moved on. At this time, this next trip will be the seven, the seventy-second trip with around 2,000 veterans have already gone. We spent years taking World War II, Korean, and this year, we have a few World War II. We have several Korean, but we all have a lot more Vietnam veterans. They're getting older and needing, you know, some help. So each trip, we have 30 veterans going with 30 guardians. Each of them have a wheelchair and the guardian takes care of the veteran, making sure that they, you know, don't fall and that they are, you know, taken care of in their wheelchair. It's five or six miles once you get up to the mall to walk around. So that's why it's so important. We, each guardian pays $400, which goes towards their trip, goes towards it. It's even more, but we've always stuck to the $400. My job is fundraising for the veterans. We leave early on Saturday morning from Wickham Park. We have two buses to transport everybody from Wickham Park to MCO, to Orlando Airport. At that time, we all go up together. There's 30 veterans, 30 guardians, between 10 and 11 board members and volunteers who've been doing this for years because it takes a lot of coordination to get everybody from point A to point B. When we get up to Baltimore, we all come off and we have another bus, two buses waiting for us to take us all around Washington DC. We take not just Brevard County, we also take Indian River and Volusia County because there's not, there's not a Honor Flight in every single county. So we, we work with different counties. We have four events that each, the veterans and the guardians go to. And that is orientation, we have flight morning when they leave, we have a return when they come back that evening from Washington DC, and then we do a reunion. And on top of that, every month, the veterans get together in four locations in Brevard County. Well, three locations in Brevard County and then one south of here. And basically Titusville, Merritt Island, and Melbourne.
And Sebastian.
And Sebastian, thank you. Haven't gone on that far. For lunch. And they get together once a month and they, it's camaraderie for the veterans, females and males. So we take a doctor on every single flight. Not to tell you, our board does not get paid a dime. Ninety-seven percent of every dime that we get goes towards our veteran. The other 3% helps out with like the paper, the costs, little, you know, ancillary, but we do not get paid anything. And we work hard. We're a working board besides the volunteers. We do take a doctor and we love taking EMTs. That's the key. Because this group is older and I'm a, I'm a hospice nurse and so, I mean, they need help medical and making sure that everybody stays hydrated and if they have medicines or anything. And that's where our doctor and EMTs come into play that are so important to make sure that they're safe leaving here and coming home safe. So each cost of every flight is around because of the airfare going up is $30,000. That's for the flight, the bus, the food and all miscellaneous stuff that we have. And that's what I do is fund raids. We get donations from individual businesses and grants. So basically, that is what Honor Flight is about. Do you have anything else you want to add?
The one thing that I will say is I went to a funeral today for one of our veterans that had gone on a flight about five years ago. But one of the things that the veterans always say when they get back is that that's one of the greatest days of their life is an Honor Flight trip, which is pretty special considering that most of them have been married and have kids and grandkids and all that, and they still put Honor Flight up there. I've been to funerals where most of the pictures are of their Honor Flight trip. So just to let you know how special it is for the veterans. And what helps us to make that possible for a memorable trip for the veterans is the guardians. And so we're so pleased to have so many of the fire department members going as guardians on our next trip, which is June the 10th. Thank you.
And the other thing I just wanted to make known so that if you know anybody, we take veterans that are on hospice or critically ill before any other veteran because if they only have a few months, we want to honor them. And it is so important, you know, especially, I mean, I've worked with patients all the time. Then we go to World War II, Korean, Viet- and we're at the Vietnam right now. But we still do take a few World War II and Korean and recent conflicts if they need to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And
I just wanted to add one thing as someone that's been on quite a few flights is there's nothing cooler than when you wheel in your World War II vet to the World War II memorial, the treatment that they get. It's like real life superheroes because that's what they are. And to actually see that and the people come to them and just run to them and, you know, ask them about stuff, it's definitely got to be one of the greatest days they've had in their life. So thank you, guys, for always supporting it and thank you to the art show for always supporting us as well.
Thank you. I will say if, if any of you have not had an opportunity to go attend one of their ceremonies, I attended it with former Mayor Tamalte. One of the few times I was up at 2:00 AM and probably one of the only times I'll be up at 2:00 AM for a long time. But incredible, moving ceremony and those are some of the most extraordinary human beings you'll ever meet in your entire life. So kudos to, to our organization and all the veterans out there. Thank you. All right. Second proclamation, bear with me. Sorry for this late edition. I got this notice two days ago. Frank DeBello is retiring. If you don't know who Frank DeBello is, he is the CEO of Space Florida, happens to be a Cocoa Beach resident. And in honoring our history, because space is very much what put us on the map, I would just like to read this proclamation. In honor and recognition of Frank DeBello's retirement, whereas Frank DeBello has helped advance Florida's position as a global leader in aerospace and has worked in the space industry for more than 50 years. And whereas Mr. DeBello has served as president and CEO of Space Florida since 2009. And whereas, under his leadership, Space Florida achieved several milestones and accomplishments, including developing Launch Complex 36 at Kennedy Spaceport, attracting new aerospace companies to Florida and supporting the growth of existing companies like Boeing and SpaceX. And whereas, Mr. DeBello has devoted his time and resources towards the betterment of the Space Coast and the aerospace industry. And whereas, Mr. DeBello is retiring June 30th, 2023, after 14 years of service with Space Florida. And whereas, Mr. DeBello is a resident of Cocoa Beach, Florida. And whereas, the residents of Cocoa Beach wish Mr. Frank DeBello a happy retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Cocoa Beach, I do proclaim June 8th, 2023 as Frank DeBello Day. Thank you. And I will tell you, I met with Mayor Steve from Satellite, who works at KSC. And while I do appreciate all the rocket launches and the fact that they're going to go to 300 by 2035, we're going to see not more night launches. Apparently, there's a conflict with airspace and FAA owns the airspace. While I love the launches, I could do with not them being at 2:00 AM. But because of that conflict and the incredible cost of diverting all the flights off the Atlantic Ocean, we're going to see a lot more night launches, so stay tuned. All right, moving right along. Need a motion for the agenda, please.
Move the, approve the agenda as written.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Mayor?
Aye.
Request was made.
Oh, right, I'm sorry. There was a request to move item
H3.
H3 off the consent. So if somebody would make a revised motion for taking that change.
I would draw my motion.
Motion to approve the agenda with H3 extracted.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five of them. All right, public comments on any items not on the agenda. Okay. Got it, no. I'm just laughing at the name, I'm sorry. Jerry Garcia. He's back.
That's right, I'm H3, Mayor.
Oh, never mind. Yeah, no, we're not there yet, sorry. So no public comment cards? These are all H3.
No public comment.
No public, and not, we're not there yet, sorry. Misstep. All right. Hearing none, we'll move right along. Staff reports.
Yes, Mayor, I sent each of you this evening a report, or excuse me, a contract and agreement from DSK and a addendum to that agreement for scope of services for the second investigation. And I say second because the first investigation led us to believe there was a need for a second one within our TCO and PD department. So that's been forwarded to you. It's been executed review by our city attorneys and by the labor attorneys. So that should be in your inbox. I do not have a estimated completion date, although I do know the firm is moving forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Mayor, good evening. We have nothing to report.
Okay. City Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
I don't have much to say, but it's, it's good to see this many people care about our city and come to the meetings. We don't, we don't get this very often, so I thank you, guys, for, for being a part of this city and voicing your, your concerns and opinions.
Mr. Willis? Mr. Williams? Mr. Hudson?
Nothing.
Just one thing, and I attended the high school graduation last week. Incredible that we have 10 Cocoa Beach High School graduate valedictorians with 4.0 or better GPA. Outstanding. The odd thing was all the boys elected not to have a speech. Smart young men. But well job, a great job by Cocoa Beach High School for turning out such outstanding students. And some of them, many of them graduated with their AA already. I mean, they're just super achievers, so kudos. We have a fantastic school system here. And moving right along, City Attorney consent agenda with the exception of H3, which was removed.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the consent agenda. H1, approve the May 18th, 2023 commission meeting minutes. Representative City Clerk Department, recommendation approved. H2, approve the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the school board of Brevard County and the city of Cocoa Beach for school resource officer, SRO, services. This one-year MOU aligns with the MOU between the school board of Brevard County and the Brevard County Sheriff's Office for the 2023-24 school year. For the 2023-24 school year, the school board of Brevard County will reimburse the city $68,500 per SRO for law enforcement services, which includes a portion of the salary, benefits and associated costs for up to the assigned two SROs and for a total not to exceed $137,000. Representatives Wes Mullins, Deputy Police Chief Robin R. Hayes, City Manager, recommendation approved. H4, approve an agreement to piggyback service between the city and Sweep America Intermediate Holdings LLC, piggybacking on a contract with Sourcewell, a state of Minnesota local government unit and service cooperative. The agreement would allow Sweeping Corporation of America LLC to provide city sweeping services at a per curb mile sweeping cost. The company would provide equipment, labor, fuel and any other materials necessary to complete the required work. The term for the contract would be for one year, starting June 1, 2023, with two one-year renewals by mutual agreement. Annual price adjustments would be based on the previous 12 months percentage change in regional CPI index. This is a budgeted item. Representatives Walker Dawson, Stormwater Utility Manager, Jared Francis, City Engineer, recommendation approved. Item H5, approve the execution of Amendment 1 of the GeoSynTech Consultant Inc. contract, expiring December 31st, 2023, allowing for a one-year extension for functions to continue. The city is currently in the middle of the dredging capping project in conjunction with Save Our Indian River Lagoon in the state of Florida. GeoSynTech Consultants, Inc. is the lead engineer design firm for the dredging capping project. The contract allows for two one-year extensions. Representatives Walker Dawson, Stormwater Utility Manager, Wayne Carrigino, Assistant to the City Manager, recommendation approved.
I approve consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. See if any item H3 that was removed.
Thank you, Mayor. Item H3, approve a three-year extension of the United States Tennis Association, Florida Section, Inc. contract with the city, as provided in Amendment 1 of the original contract. Services rendered by USTA include managing, operating and providing services at the Cocoa Beach tennis facility. USTA pays the city a fee per month and a percentage of net profits generated by programs. The city of Cocoa Beach provides the contractor with the tennis courts, telephone and sewer service and maintains the facilities. This is a budgeted item. Representatives Laird McLean, Recreation Director, Wayne Carrigino, Assistant to City Manager, recommendation approved.
To approve item H3 that was removed from the consent agenda is read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We've got quite a few cards. I would like to hear from some of the votes before we make a vote. Okay, now Jerry Garcia.
Okay, Jerry Garcia, Cocoa Beach resident here for almost Get a little closer, is that better? Okay, I didn't bring my guitar. Okay, Cocoa Beach resident here for almost 20 years. I'm an avid tennis player here, but I don't use these facilities lately since the last, probably since USTA has taken over. So I have a lot of cons- I have a lot of concerns with recent- can you hear me? You can't hear me. I want to move that a little bit closer. Okay, can you hear me now? I'm going to try to yell. Okay, that's better. I'm an avid tennis player, was coached by Arthur Ash's coach, if you guys are old enough for that. I played for the University of Maryland for a year. I trained my son, who played for the Air Force Academy. He was a top player here in Brevard. There were three of them. He went to the Air Force Academy. He was a highly ranked player for Florida. I've coached him for quite some time and coached other players. And I'm familiar with the process of coaching young tennis players, but also adults, because I also coached, not here, but throughout the country, high-end adults. So, but my point is, is that the USTA here does not advocate, I think, and also train adults in a very open environment. So what do I mean by open? Open means inviting other tennis professionals, other coaches to come in and train in their environment. So they don't provide a, a very inclusive environment, I per se. So they don't advocate, I don't believe they don't advocate enough invitations to other folks. For example, the Brevard Districts. The Brevard Districts should be played here. Beautiful courts, so, but they're not played here. So we have a lot of courts here that are underutilized, even for pickleball. So if you go to Kit Canaveral, those courts are full of pickleballers, so just as well, and tennis players. So their fees are reasonable. Fees here for what you get are not reasonable. So, so my point is, I don't think you really should approve this contract. So there are better people that can manage those facilities here locally that have been trained or, you know, outside of the USTA. So, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Whitick?
So my name is Michael Whitick. I am a local group, born and raised here in Cocoa Beach. I just reiterate some of the things that Jerry said, that the concerns about the USTA not being inclusive. So my daughter's a tennis player. She's been training here since before the USTA. Used to be able to practice on the courts over there. Now she's not allowed to practice or train on the courts. She plays for Cocoa Beach High School. She was just named to the Cape Coast Conference tennis team, but she's not allowed to practice at, you know, at the racquetball, at the racket club there. So I request the commission to just postpone the vote on this and to allow some other people to make bids for the job because I know there's other people who are interested in taking over the job and participating. I mean, I think the city's done a great job restoring the courts to a much better condition, but I think that's been mostly the city that's done that. And the USTA has benefited from that. And then again, the restrictions on coaching is a big issue that even when my daughter goes play for fun with her coach, sometimes she's chased off because she's being told that she's being coached. And I think that's unreasonable for citizens not being able to use our own courts. Thank you.
Dane Chantrock? Sorry if I butchered your name. Dane, come on.
Hi, I'm Dane Chantrock. I'm a professional tennis player and I'd like to bid for that contract, the Cocoa Beach High contract. I've been a professional for many, many years. I see what's going on here. I service the local residents here and they love me and I think I can do a much better job than they can. You know, when I bid for it, everybody can play. Anybody can come there and they can, they're not going to be shunned away, you know. There's many coaches that go there, they want to play, but the USTA just kind of, you know, just, just shoo them away. And I would definitely like to bid for it and I, there's more speakers here that would, that can back me up by this. Thank you.
Dan Ryder?
Dan Ryder, I've been here 20 years. I got two kids, two teenagers, both tennis players. And we're members of the Kiwi Club. That's where we go play. We pay the fees because there's a high-quality junior program there, which there's not here in Cocoa Beach, if there were one. And I do know Dane, he's a really good coach and he's got a team behind him that would like to bid for this. It's going to be even as far as cost, I believe. And play here. It's pretty much a wasteland over there on Sundays, on Saturdays, and we can't go. We can't play there because it's proprietary USTA. It's pretty much a cushy job for the USTA guy, and he just sits there. There's no real motivation to, you know, push for tournaments, push for junior programs. I think with this team here, at least give them an opportunity, at least move this... I believe the contract renews in November, so there's time. I would say, I would propose that they move this and give them a chance to, to bid. That's it.
Alvin Trotter.
My name's Alvin Trotter. I'm a local supporter of the community. I am a professional tennis coach and a former professional player. I've coached and played all over the United States for the past 30, I'd say 34 or 35 years. I've contributed to the development of some of your residents here in Cocoa Beach. As a matter of fact, one of them is a very, very important young man, because he's a 23-year-old autistic young man. I can't take him over here. He won't go. So I take him to other courts around. I've taken him to Merritt Island, I've taken him, you know, Cocoa area, and to say the least, I think that we as a collection of pros and tennis players, because I also play and compete in the leagues that the Space Coast Tennis League has provided, I've competed in the USTA leagues that have been provided. Now, the bad part that I find for me as a coach and a player is my team, which used to be here in Cocoa Beach, we have played at De Soto Park for the last couple of seasons. I don't know the reason why, but something I heard had to do with money. I don't know what it is. I pay to play. I've done it. I've been a USTA member since I was 13 or 14 years old. I've played in tournaments all throughout Florida. I've been a ranked junior. I've been a ranked adult. Again, I've played it professionally. I have nothing against the administration or the pros here at Cocoa Beach Country Club. John is a good friend of mine. He's been on my team. I support him as a pro and as a job, but for me personally, I would love to see the United States Tennis Association fulfill like tournaments for adults, tournaments for juniors, because I know growing up, I spent a good portion of time coming from Orlando, where I grew up, where I can go to a tournament in four different sections of the city, all in one weekend. Okay? We don't have those tournaments over here, but we have such a huge tennis community, and I think we are taking a knock if we let the USTA continue to operate this facility without being able to provide us with things like the tournaments, the round robins, and, and events that we could bring collectively more money into this community. So that's my take on it, and I hope that we get some support to at least get me and some other pros and some other groups of administrators to really oversee the courts here and be able to provide that to the community. So that's my word, and I thank you very much for your time.
I don't believe you're Allison, sir.
Sorry, I'm not Allison.
I mean, you could be, but...
It's 2023.
It's 2023, so...
Hi, my name is Allison Morehead, and I represent just the average league player. I'm not one of the former coaches or anything ranked. In fact, I don't even win very many matches. I just want to say that as a Cocoa Beach local resident here, I've enjoyed the tennis courts here, and I'd like to see or ask the commission if they could consider pushing back on the USTA contract. I know the grant money is huge and probably is the big incentive, but is there any other opportunity cost here that's not being looked at, that we're leaving on the table? Another way to generate revenues for the city by using the courts? Other coaches, other opportunities? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Joyce Schofield.
My name is Joyce Schofield, and I live at 118 Chapala Road. I've been a resident of Cocoa Beach for 53 years. I've been playing at Cocoa Beach, at the Cocoa Beach Courts for almost 50 years. I am the captain of a senior Space Coast Tennis League team, and I'm speaking on behalf of my team, and I think for most of the other women teams that play at Cocoa Beach. We are extremely pleased with USTA operating the courts. We're also very appreciative of their employees, especially John Sanders, our tennis bro, and Lori, who does so much more than just operating the front desk. So on behalf of the women who play there and myself, we would like to see the city of Cocoa Beach renew USTA's contract. And just one other thing I heard from one of the speakers, I sure hope that you do not consider converting some of our courts to pickleball, pickleball courts. We have too many tennis players here. I think if we're going to have outside pickleball, we should have a designated separate area for that. Thank you.
Jennifer Hatton.
My name is Jennifer Hatton, and we are new to Cocoa Beach. We've been here August. It will be a year, and we've come because my daughter is an amazing tennis player. She's at Cocoa Beach High School, and she's varsity, she'll be a senior. The challenge we're having right now is she can't play on the court when she needs to play with her coach. She's training to get a scholarship with the college based on her effort and energy that she puts into tennis. So the problem I have as a mom is she doesn't have a schedule, and she can't just freely go on the court and play when she needs to train. So I would hope you would entertain a new contract. USTA, I do love them. We have been a member for 15 years, five to 15 years, and she would participate in the tournaments in Phoenix, Tucson, New Mexico. She is a ranked tennis player with the USTA, and we would like to continue her training right here in Cocoa Beach. Kiwi Tennis Club is not really in our price range, and this is where we want to have her train. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm a student at Cocoa Beach. I train every day for tennis so that I can do good on my team during tennis season. The challenge I have is trying to find a court in Cocoa Beach, because there's not a lot of courts available. We're not allowed to train at Cocoa Beach Tennis Courts here at the racket club, and when we try to find other courts around, we can't really like have schedules on them because there's like other players who want to have them, but at Cocoa Beach, there's so many courts there, and it's like a wasted opportunity to not just me, but many other athletes who are trying to train. So I think it would just be a great idea to have other training programs be able to go on at the racket club, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Couldn't hear you. Sorry. Didn't want to.
Good evening, everyone. I've been in Cocoa Beach since 1992. I live in Cocoa Beach, 8 South Street. When I got here, I wanted to put my children to the college, but I didn't have enough money. If you want to work nine to five, I wouldn't be able to send my kid to go to college. So I decided that the only way that I'm going to get my kid to the Air Force Academy and the West Point is by teaching them tennis, all my children. So that is my, that is my job. So I start training at the Cocoa Beach, right here. At that time, that called Richard, which is the head coach there, but we had a different kind of training. So I would try to train my kid to be the top player. I myself win the national champion at 35 in Thailand, and it only takes me two years to win, to become a national champion at 35. So I got the knowledge that I'd be able to teach my children, because tennis is very complicated game. One of the more difficult game that you could master. So I was thinking about how many people, if I could get my kid in the top 10 of the state of Florida, I would be able to get to the college without paying. So that was my agenda, and then I did that. So my kid, all my kid, win the scholarship to the college without I'm paying any dime. And I have to leave... When I come here, I live in Motorhome, which is live in Cape Canaveral, and then that is, that is my idea, and everybody say I'm crazy, because I wouldn't be able to do it, but I proved them wrong. So now, at one time, I was training the junior, which is, we win the AAU Junior Olympic here, right here in Bovard County. No one never know. And then I wouldn't be able to go down there at Cocoa Beach Tennis Cup, because I don't know why, what the reason, because to me, tennis to be open to any coach, and then they bring their own coach, they come out there and they practice, they play each other and see how good they are. I don't mind that people, other people come and coaching. So that's what I want them, I want them to open up, that anyone could go out there and teach your own kid, bring your own coach down here and play, and then we, we compete each other. We're getting better by seeing somebody else how to coach it. That, that's all I ask for. Anyway, thank you for listening to me. I'm not good at English.
My name's Tim Tumulty, 59-year-old resident of Cocoa Beach. I'm also the chair of the Leisure Board, and give you a brief history of, of the tennis courts. The USTA's been there a few years now, but prior to that, as the last gentleman mentioned, there was a coach out there by the name of Richard, I don't remember his last name, but the city paid him and to, to be the coach and to, to run the facility, and we had basically no revenue whatsoever from the tennis courts. That being said, now we're going forward here with the USTA, and they are, they're paying us, but I would suggest if you choose to delay this, that you allow the Leisure Board to vet this prior to it coming back to you. That's all I have to say, that giving you that option, and appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? I will close public comment on this topic. Anybody want to kick it off? We have a motion and a second.
I want to see if, can we put this out to bid and change?
We can. You'd have to withdraw your second.
I'd like to withdraw my second.
Well, I can, I can withdraw my motion, but it could have been appropriate action was to...
Can't hear you all.
Commissioner Willis pulled her second on my original motion, and I was saying I could pull my original motion, but it, it could have been appropriate just to have the, the commission table it and kick it back to the Leisure Services Board and let them chew on a little bit and decide to put it out for bids or how they want to go forward and then bring it back to the commission.
I agree with you on that, yeah.
So we'll just, we'll just, we'll go ahead and undo the motion.
Okay.
All right, just for the record. You got that, Lori?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And then by consensus, if the commission wants to kick it back to the Leisure Board, let them discuss it and bring back a path forward to the commission. Would that be acceptable to everybody? That's... Okay. Next item.
Got a plan? All right. Thank you. So what was decided was that it will go back to the Leisure Board for them to discuss, and it was tabled, and they'll come with a path forward for us to review.
What was the moment that last spoke the Leisure Board?
Tim Tumulty?
The Democratic League, the obviously, Abrams.
Public comment's over? Sorry. Public comment's over.
So technically, we didn't table it, because we would have had to table it today, so we just pushed it back to the...
So let me just make this clear. You guys do want to allow other people to bid on it so that we get the best, the best...
You've got to represent it on the Leisure Board that you could talk to.
Yeah.
And if, you know, you're welcome to ask them to bring that forward at the Leisure Board meeting, and I wouldn't, I couldn't imagine that they wouldn't discuss that at the Leisure Board meeting.
Okay. I'd prefer a bid, just because it would make it more fair and, and a better opportunity for the city, so... All right. Moving right along. City Attorney, unfinished business, item J one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item J one, Ordinance Number 1676, second reading, public hearing and adoption, An Ordinance of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, Amending Appendix B Land Development Code, Chapter Three, Design Standards, Article Three, Development and Construction, Section Three dash 35, Temporary Importable Structures of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cocoa Beach, revising provisions as to mobile food dispensing vehicles by allowing, with conditions, the use of certain public rights of way to dispense frozen prepackaged food, providing for conflicts, complications, severability, and an effective date. Ordinance Number 1676 would permit the sale of frozen prepackaged food from mobile food dispensing vehicles within the public right of way. The RS1... The RS one single-family residential zoning district has been identified as a potential operation area due to the fact that these areas are primarily located within low-density neighborhoods with less traffic and lower speed, lower speed limits. The stopping time is limited to a minimum of five minutes to reduce conflicts with the surrounding community. The Planning Board heard this item on April third, twenty twenty-three, and made a recommendation of approval. Representative Tanja McCoy, Development Services Director, recommendation approved.
Move to adopt ordinance sixteen seventy-six on second reading.
Second.
It's a roll call vote.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Bearing none, that closes public comment. City Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Hutcheson?
Aye.
Mr. Willis?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Beazey?
Aye.
Mayor Malik?
Aye.
City Attorney, item J two, please.
Item J two, Adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash oh six, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, amending Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash zero five, a master resolution for fees, to change fees in Exhibit Nine, Utility Rates, Reuse Charges, and add Exhibit nine point five, fats, oils, and grease control fines and enforcement fees, providing for amendment of fees, incorporation of recitals, and providing for an effective date. If approved, Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash oh six would adopt utility rates for fiscal years twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five and set fines and enforcement fees for fats, oils, and grease control. The City Financial Advisory, P R, PFM, will be available to present financial data relevant to the user rates. Representative Brad Calso. Calso, Water Reclamation Director. Patricia Draycott, Chief Financial Officer, recommendation approved.
Move to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash oh six.
We have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. I do have a card. I would like to hear public comment first. Ashley Swingle?
Hi, I'm Ashley Swingle. I'm a resident of Cocoa Beach and a property owner here in Cocoa Beach as well. I have two properties in downtown Cocoa Beach at Second Street North on Orlando Avenue. My concern it only lies in not with the raising of the rates, and I understand the need for that. But our property, because of where it's located, we don't have reclaim available. And we only, we were forced to use potable water for all of our water use, including irrigation. So the increase of the water rates or the sewer rates here will impact us significantly in terms of our cost. We have requested the utility department to add a separate meter for irrigation use. Some utility departments do that. They have declined to do so. And so what I'm asking for is for the City Council to help us find a way to, to provide for that separate meter for irrigation so that we're not having to pay the sewer on that as well. Because we're obviously not utilizing sewer on that part of our water. So that, that's really, I know it's, it's just associated with if this passes, then our, our water rates go up exponentially more than, than other users. Because that, and I imagine I'm not the only one in that, in that situation. I imagine there are other property owners that are in the same, same situation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Ms. Scott?
Good evening, Commissioners. Janice Scott, Cocoa Beach. I really welcome this ordinance. It's long overdue. If you ever go to a restaurant in Cocoa Beach, and many of the older ones, you'll notice you get cleaned up to go. When you leave there, you smell like french fries or your clothes smell like grease. It's because they don't have an oil, a grease trap, or they don't clean it. And I spoke to one of the popular resident owners not too long ago. He's since deceased, no fault of mine, but he, he did fix his grease trap in his kitchen and fixed the ventilating fan, cleaned that once in a while. And it really has cleaned up the restaurant. It's very nice. It's not all greasy anymore. And thanks to Brad for working this.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor. PFM, Jay Glover is here to provide you that analysis that we committed we would bring to you.
I would like to get that, but I, I did have a question from Brad, if I may, City Manager. How many properties are impacted by the prior speaker's statement?
So we, not many. We don't, we don't provide reclaim to county residents. And then there is a spot near five twenty that doesn't have reclaim.
That's still city limits?
Yes. And there is a spot downtown between, I'd say between Third and Fourth, even Second Street on the Atlantic side. But I just discussed with her, we might be able to get reclaimed to that property on Orlando.
Sounds like you got a solution there.
We'll look into that for her.
So glad so many people came for this fascinating utility study. Thanks for coming for the utility study. We got budget next week. We'll, we'll be looking for all of you.
I'm Brad Calso. I'm the Water Reclamation Director. At the May fourth meeting, we presented you with a rate assessment, which you directed us to do a twenty percent rate increase for twenty-four and a twenty percent rate increase for twenty-five. We also had a request from a few of you to have our financial advisor take a look at that scope that was prepared by our engineering firm. Mr. Jay Glover with PFM is here tonight, and he would like to share some further information for you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commission Member Jay Glover from PFM, the city's financial advisor. And as was mentioned, we were asked to just take a look at the city's financial profile that relates to the sewer system and just provide a few observations that might help you as you ponder these potential rate increases. So we have just prepared a few slides, and I know there's a lot of people here, so I'll be quickly. This slide, and I know these numbers might be hard for the audience to see, but I think the Commissioners have the presentation in front of them, just provides an overview of the existing debt of the utility system, which we talked about several months ago when we came and gave a debt profile overview. But the city has very little debt associated with its water and sewer system. And it declines over time as you move through and pay off debt. When looking at utility credit metrics, we really look at a number of things, and this just isn't PFM. This is what any lender would look at. This is what a rating agency would look at if you actually went out to the public markets to procure a credit rating. They would look at the demographics, service area economy is always important to the lenders, affordability of rates. They will look at the level of rates compared to the income of the citizens paying those rates to make sure the rates remain affordable. An important factor is debt service coverage. So debt service coverage is essentially looking at the net revenues of the utility system and comparing that to the annual debt service amount that's paid. And that generates a coverage ratio. That shows that you're generating sufficient revenues to repay bondholders. It's one of the most important ratios when looking at any type of financing instrument. I would say perhaps the second most important is your reserve liquidity, days cash on hand. They always want to make sure you have reserves in place to deal with unforeseen circumstances, especially in a place like Cocoa Beach that is susceptible to environmental risks such as hurricanes. Obviously, the system condition, capacity to meet needs, capital improvement plan. They want to make sure that you're keeping up with your CIP or capital improvement so the system remains in good working order. And that as assets depreciate, you're actually reinvesting in the system to keep it in good working order. They look for long-term financial planning, financial policies. And then, as I mentioned before, especially in Florida and especially for coastal communities, they're looking at environmental risks and what you all might be doing to help mitigate some of those risks. So those are kind of broad brush, the different credit metrics that we look at in terms of a utility system. There's also two legal requirements associated with your existing debt that apply to debt you have on the books and potential debt that you might issue in the future. And the first of those is what's called an additional bonds test. So within your existing bond documents, you have to set your rates and charges sufficient to meet a one point two five times coverage ratio whenever you go to enter the market with new debt. So they want to make sure again that you have revenue sufficient to meet not only your existing debt, but any proposed new debt. So that really only comes into play when you actually want to access the capital markets to issue debt to fund capital projects. Perhaps the more important one is what's called a rate covenant. And that is a legal obligation to set your rates and charges each year to meet a specific coverage ratio. And in this case, your bond documents require one point two five times coverage. So you are legally obligated to actually set rates to maintain that coverage ratio. And if for any reason you fall below that coverage ratio, you need to implement a plan to put rates in place that will meet that ratio. And why is that important? When you look at the financial profile without any rate increases being put in place, you're getting dangerously close to that one point two five times coverage ratio. And we'll show that in the next couple of slides as to why it's important to put these rate increases in place, not only for the system assets and keeping it in good working order, but really from a legal requirement within your existing bond documents. These next two slides, and there's a lot of numbers on here. I won't go over all of them, but this really is numbers generated by the city. And this shows sort of a pay-as-you-go approach to your capital improvement program. And I will highlight, if you look in FY twenty-three and you move down to the third row of the red, I guess, square around the numbers, you'll see a one point one six times coverage ratio. So within your twenty twenty-three budget, you are projected to be below that rate covenant. Likely, you conservatively budget, so your actual numbers when they come in might be above that coverage ratio. But again, without action to increase rates moving forward, which you can see as you move across that line, you would be in violation of that rate covenant. So again, very important to put a rate increase in place so you maintain that coverage ratio. I'll also point out the bottom, projected unrestricted funds. You'll see here, you know, your reserves are decreasing over time because you're cash funding a large capital improvement program. And thus, the current users of the system are bearing the full cost of those capital improvements. So it's resulting in the potential need for higher rate increases than you might otherwise need to put in place. And I'll contrast that with potentially doing a partial debt funding of your CIP to actually maintain those reserves at a healthier level. So by spreading out the cost of a little bit of your capital improvement program over a longer period of time, either fifteen or twenty years, you actually maintain higher reserves and potentially will result in the need for smaller rate increases moving forward. So it's really sort of a trade-off. You can put higher rate increases in place to generate more cash today to pay for that capital improvement program. Or you can pay for that cost over its useful life and have future users pay for that and stretch it out with some debt funding. And again, that debt funding doesn't necessarily need to be through a public capital markets deal or a bank loan. There's programs within the state like the SRF program that provides heavily subsidized interest rates. And sometimes for eligible projects, it can almost be zero percent interest rates, especially for some of your, you know, sewer-related projects. So just something to consider. The last slide here, again, is just some observations that highlight some factors within the numbers. If you look at those charts, your operating revenues have essentially been flat to stable over the last three or four years. Combine that with dramatically increasing operating expenses. As we all know, everything is more expensive today, the cost of chemicals, the cost of operating. So you're with a situation where your revenues have been flat, your expenditures have been increasing, as well as your capital improvement program has been increasing. And what has that resulted in? It's resulted in lower debt service coverage ratios and lower reserves. So what I would suggest to you is that part of your budget process this year, which I think you all are considering, is putting rate increases in place to help deal with that situation for the next two years. Also, potential SRF funding or some other funding source for a small portion of your capital improvement program. And perhaps as equally important, is to engage a rate consultant to come in and take a long-term look at the system. And what they'll do is they'll look at over the next five years, they'll look at what type of adjustments might need to be made based on assumptions related to operating expenses, assumptions related to your capital improvement program, and really put a, a, a long-term plan in place that will help you deal with not only your operating needs, but also your capital needs and have a financially healthy system. You know, we're your financial advisor, but there are specific firms that actually come in and look at rates for utility systems and will recommend to you what type of adjustments might be needed. That might be even something like after these two twenty percent increases, maybe something related to CPI moving forward. Maybe it's, you know, smaller rate increases moving forward. And they'll also be able to do sensitivity to show you, you know, if you want to cash fund your entire CIP, this is what rate increase might need to be put in place. Versus if you want to debt fund a portion of it and cash fund a portion of it, maybe smaller rate increases might be needed. But we'd recommend definitely moving forward with the current rate increase to get your coverage ratio back to where it needs to be. But then taking a long-term look at your rates to make sure you have a healthy financially utility system moving forward. And with that, I'm happy to address any questions you all might have.
Good presentation. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Jay. I, I love it when you talk my language. You just made the case for bank debt, for financing, not bank debt, but just SRF debt. I mean, we're borrowing money sub-two percent, fixed rate for a very long period of time. Yes, we have cash, but using that cash would be detrimental.
And I would suggest to you, in the current environment, that cash is probably earning over five percent with short-term rates being very low. So there's actually an arbitrage situation whereby you can, you know, borrow debt more cheaply than you're actually investing your own funds. Granted, that likely won't persist forever, but we're in a very unique environment right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other public comment? Bearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving right on along. City Attorney, item K one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item K one, Adopt Ordinance Number sixteen seventy-seven on first reading and public hearing. An ordinance of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, amending the Land Development Code by adding a provision to Section four point four three of Article Four, Variance Waiver and Special Exception, regarding certain special exceptions for owners of property within the Town Center Redevelopment District, providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and an effective date. Currently, if an applicant wants to request to adjust or modify their previously granted special exception, they would need to submit for a new special exception. Ordinance Number sixteen seventy-seven would create the ability for owners within the Town Center Redevelopment District to submit for a modification of their existing special exception, even when their item is no longer permitted use. The Planning Board heard this item at their May first, twenty twenty-three, public meeting and made a recommendation of approval. Representative Tanja McCoy, Development Services Director, recommendation approved.
Move to adopt ordinance Number sixteen seventy-seven on the first reading.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, public comment?
Yeah, do we? Do you want to do public comment first? Say, do we want to?
Cards, if anybody has some.
Do we want to put in any, any kind of limit on the number that they can apply for so it's not perpetually grandfathered in? Do we want to consider adding some limit of how many times they can apply for this modification? So that it's not just perpetually grandfathered in? That's my only comment.
I'm okay with it as, as it is. Any public comment? Bearing none? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Moving right along. City Attorney, K two.
Thank you, Mayor. Item K two, Discuss, Ordinance Number sixteen seventy-eight, an ordinance of the City of Cocoa Beach, Florida, creating a new Chapter thirteen point five noise, providing findings of fact, providing adoption, providing for enforcement, providing means and method of determining excessive noise, providing that excessive noise is code violation, declaring that excessive noise is a public nuisance, providing exemptions, providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and effective date. Ordinance Number sixteen seventy-eight would provide for the creation of a new Chapter thirteen point five noise and provide for clarification of the city's definition of excessive noise, outlining enforcement measures and establishes new dates and times for enforcement related to excessive noise. Representatives Becky Voss and Wade Voss, City Attorneys, recommendation approved.
Representatives Becky Voss and Wade Voss, City Attorneys, recommendation discussed.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a second?
Is it I'd motion or you motion?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Got some cards, looking for public comment, if anybody's here regarding noise. Mark Phelps. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Mark Phelps, 4805 Ocean Beach Boulevard. I also partners in Sandbar Sports Grill, Cocoa Beach Fish Camp, and Flavor Kitchen and Wine Bar. The sound ordinance, I mean, we've had Sandbar for 18 years, and I believe it's been a bar for 30 years before us. And as far as I know, at least the 18 years I've been here, it's always been the same times. But the definition, as you guys talked about at the last meeting, was very vague. I don't think we need to be changing times if you don't have the definition to enforce. We need to clarify that, as you guys talked about at the last meeting, with, I feel, scientific methods, as you brought up, the decimal meters and whatnot, as opposed to just somebody hearing voices or hearing lyrics at a certain distance for the daytime and a certain distance for the nighttime. If you change it to nine o'clock, it's going to bring up a lot more complaints. I just think that's opening a can of worms. When it's already in place at 11, you're just not enforcing it. If it's truly 300 feet at an audible level, there's will be no other problems with other establishments. I mean, you can tell who it is. And then after 11, 100 feet, just figure out what those decimal levels should be. And then enforce it. And that's something that we don't seem to be doing. Don't let, somebody said this too, don't let one place ruin it for everybody else, even if it is one or a couple of places. We don't need to pick anybody out. But, you know, we've had problems in the past, and you guys seem to go through it with different establishments around town. And we've had a few issues in the past. We work through it with the ordinance we have. We don't need to change that. We just need to clarify it and enforce it. So that's my point on those. I mean, this is a tourist district now, thank God. I love Cocoa Beach. It's been wonderful for the last 18 years for Sandbar. So let's keep moving forward with that. Downtown has some buzz. I know a lot of people don't like that, but it's been a while since the downtown has had some buzz. And it's fun. It's interesting. Real quick, I know you got some other things going on tonight. We had some issues with, we needed to get in touch with the city manager. Gave her a phone call. Within a week, she set down a meeting. We sat down, talked for about 45 minutes, and came to some resolutions, and we're moving forward with it. So I don't know what else is going on, but my interaction with is 100%. So, thanks.
Any other public comments? Ms. Scott? Pastor Capizzi next.
Janice Scott, Cocoa Beach. I live on the north side, and at the last commission meeting, there were, there was one or two people from the north side also complaining about the noise that we hear from various entities. And some of my neighbors have been telling me, like, for example, there's a vacation rental in the middle of my street. People who live across the canal come only from Orlando a few times a month. And they wanted to know what was, called up the neighbor, what's going on next door to you? There are 20 people out at the pool screaming and yelling. There are eight cars in front. And I'm like, well, why don't you call the police? Well, you know, it really is terrible. And residents are really, really reluctant to bother the police about noise. There needs to be a special phone number or some other way that residents feel comfortable living in their palace, not being abused by the noise of these rental properties in particular, and don't feel like they're imposing on the police, when especially on a three-day weekend when they know that the police are stretched thin anyway. So that's my recommendation, and I think the residents would really support that. Find a way, maybe even get an Ombudsman. I think that would be a great idea. So the citizens can go to that person and say, hey, these are the issues. Maybe put them on speed dial. Thank you.
Keith Capizzi, 116 Bocasiega, and it's loud. I thought after that last meeting, they would maybe be a little bit helpful to us. And it's not that I'm just an old codger, just an old preacher man. I've been playing rock and roll bands in Cocoa Beach since the early 80s. I know all about bands and setting up equipment and PA systems, and I've been doing it my whole life. And so it's, it's just, the location is not working. So I think something needs to happen. I think, set the ordinance sound. I really don't think you need any electronic sound mechanisms. Just ask anybody on any of the local streets, just knock on the door and say, is it loud? And they'll say, yeah, it's loud. And all the rock and rolling I've done in my life, I've, I've, my hearing is not as good as it used to be, and I can hear it perfectly. It's a problem. I think it needs to be addressed, and I think the only way to really settle it is to make it at a volume that is not going to hurt the business, but not hurt the residents, and make the fine to where it hurts. If you fine them $25, that's ridiculous.
Any other public comments? You need a card from me, or? Just name and address, sir?
Matt Lawson, 369 Montecito Drive. I do not live in Cocoa Beach. I'm just curious as to what triggered this whole conversation. I mean, the one point I want to make, everyone in this room remembers three years ago. I know I do. People lost jobs, businesses were closed. We finally had a recovery point, and now we have businesses. This isn't just about one business, okay? This is about this whole community. Okay, if we're worried about noise, you know, that's, we're talking about space shuttles launching two in the morning, but worry about bars that are going to, like, turn off music at 10:30 at night. Okay, I understand. People that live here, I get it. Okay, sir, I respect your opinion. However, you know, these businesses create jobs, they bring money into this community. We all know this is a tourist community, correct? There's a lot of growth we're not happy about, traffic, everything else, right? However, you know, their voice needs to be heard. I'm not a business owner. I don't even live in Cocoa Beach. But I do enjoy going to places where I can have a good time with my family in a safe environment. And I think that the message is lost. There's a lot of ambiguity here with the verbiage, typical, you know, we don't really know what's going on, there's this, that. But I think that we need to be heard as people that live in this area. I lived in Brevard County 20 years, okay? I didn't just move here from New York yesterday, okay? And I think that, you know, people are being targeted. The first gentleman had some good points, okay? But I think people are being targeted for the wrong reasons, okay? And I know everyone in this community lives off tourism, okay? And if people can't come here and have things to do and have fun things to do, they won't come back, okay? So if we want to target people for the wrong reasons, then we can do that. However, let's remember, three years ago, businesses closed, people lost jobs, people felt a lot of pain, okay? And we just forget about it like it never happened. We're going to brush it under the rug. However, that's not the case, okay? This community is thriving. And the reason I come to Cocoa Beach is for live music, okay? For good times, fun times with my family, okay? So I want everyone to think about that for a moment. Think about where you were at three years ago during COVID and think about today. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Ladies first.
My name is Raylene Manning, and I actually wasn't going to speak tonight. I had no, didn't want to. I feel like this is a really, really hot topic in Cocoa Beach.
Address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I live at 103 Yacht Haven Drive. And I also am a local business owner in downtown. My husband has owned a business here for 20 years. And we very much support the community as much as possible. We do not own a restaurant or bar or make any kind of loud noise. So we don't really have a dog in the fight as far as that goes. But just to go off what the gentleman just said recently in the last, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, about the livelihood of downtown and the impact. I will tell you as a business owner that I've watched our profits yo-yo for the last three years because people are affected by their taxes, they're affected by the economy. They do not, a lot of people paid in this year and did not have money to spend. I have seen Cocoa Beach feel very lively, but I've also watched our financials change drastically in the last few years. And this is a 20-year business that thrives off our name itself and also tourism. So as much as I go around and try to support other businesses, I think it is important to remember that we are a tourist town. Like I said, I live here, and I understand the noise, and I understand the frustration as also local. I really do truly see it both sides. I hope we can find a happy medium where we don't run new businesses out of town, though, because it is lively downtown. And I actually spent my first time at Area 142 last weekend. I'm kind of a homebody now. I don't even drink. I was sober there, and I had a great time. And I watched families have a great time, and a really cool band came to town, and I saw a lot of locals as well. So I really truly hope we can find a happy medium. So, thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nevada Hatfield. I live at 55 West. I'm the general manager of The Dunes, 3218 Atlantic Lickers. We're the new on the block. I talked the last two periods about our feelings and understandings to work with the residents and our business. Feelings have changed, times have changed, and we felt the pressure as a business from the last two meetings. But I want to talk about economic impact. For us as a business, our numbers also tally up for the last six months. We finally found our baseline. We look analytical from marketing, from our numbers, from our back POS. What I see, though, as economic impact is when it rains, we know for the next two days, our sales are going to be about 35% down. Whenever the snowbirds go back up home around late May, late April, early May, our sales are going to be about 35 until the vacationers come in for the tours to rebound. Now, I spoke to my accountant, my ownership, and, you know, our attorney this week, and I said, hey, guys, if we put in the scenario of now an ordinance at 10:00 p.m. on weekends and ordinance at 9:00 p.m. on weekdays, what is that going to mean for sales percentage for us of our economic impact after we just paid all this money to invest on this block? Because we believe in Cocoa Beach, we believe in the residents and all of you. And it's not just for us to thrive, but it's to create a platform for all of you, like I said the first meeting. Like the guy from Sandbar said, it's pretty much, I agree with that, with the ordinance of it shouldn't be changed from 11:00 p.m. It should just be changed from the definition and with the decimal reading so we can adhere to that. I know our next-door neighbor is 142. I think they maneuvered their stage twice to see how can the sound affect, you know, let's not face it towards the neighborhood, let's face it this way. Let's see how the sound is, pointing our speakers down, taking your guys' suggestions. And he's being very proactive. With us, how that affects is my speakers. I think the first meeting with Coconut's GM said, hey, Dunes used to put their speaker outside. They put it back in after the first police meeting with ownership, and we stopped doing that. We're being very proactive to meet all your guys' needs, but the economic impact, if we take it from 11:00 p.m. on the weekends to 10:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., as a small three-tier business of new business owners in town, that's going to economically hurt us in the development of downtown. Not only that, I really wish that all of you do your due diligence. This is a rushed month and a half, I think, two months of two meetings, or three meetings now. And the due diligence needs to be, the sound engineers, like we were speaking, I believe Commissioner, the Commissioner woman spoke about it the first time. Sound engineers, due diligence. Have you guys personally, you guys don't have to answer, went to the business of downtown, of Fish Camp, of Jonathan's, of everyone else, and sat down and asked us business owners, how's this going to affect you or my 14 employees or my store or anything else? I really welcome the door open for you guys to come to my place because also, none of you guys came out to us. We talked to, I think, the mayor on email about two weeks ago about something else, but it's like, come out to our places, talk to us, how that's going to hurt and affect us. The economic impact is going to be detrimental, and it will destroy us if this ordinance is passed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brooke Sullivan. I too do not live in Cocoa Beach. I live in Satellite Beach. I'm not going to give you my address because it's no one's business. But I am a lawyer, have practiced for more than 20 years. I moved from South Florida to Brevard County to provide a better life for my now seven-year-old son. I love living in Brevard County. I lived in Vieira for eight years and have now moved to Satellite Beach. And now, you know what I do? Instead of going out to Vieira or downtown Melbourne or downtown Cocoa or Satellite Beach, I come to Cocoa Beach, and that's why I'm here tonight, to go out on the weekends and bring my child and spend money in Cocoa Beach. So for anyone here to question, this is ridiculous. As a lawyer, as a taxpayer, as a parent, and as a member of this community, I'm absolutely blown away by this. Because if you pass this ambiguous ordinance that is reserved, that doesn't have any definitions, doesn't have any information that anyone logical would pass, if you pass anything like this, all that's going to happen is the money that's being applied to this local area is just going to shift north, south, east, or west. I guess you can't go east. So you can send it to Cape Canaveral, you can send it to Satellite Beach, you can go back to Cocoa. But why would you do that? Think about this. All the local people that are affected by this are not just the business owners of bars that have loud music that we're talking about. Let's not pretend that's not what we're talking about. What about the parking garage at $30 a person? Or the people that are now employed that are sitting there with flags, flagging down people at $30 a pop to park in a parking garage because it's a live concert at $30 a ticket? Or the people that are now employed that are selling water or street vendors or Subway that now has twice the traffic coming in? Or people like me that are choosing to come to your community that care enough that I'm here tonight to speak to all of you? Because this, you can't stop progress. You just will shut it down from your area and affect your constituents. Because this is going to happen. Progress happens. Brevard is on the map, and it's exploding. But you can decide how to regulate this so that the local residents aren't affected at the same way that local business can thrive. There's a compromise. But to have a statute that someone by noise can hear from a car 100 feet away, 500 feet, or 50 decimals, or 65 decimals, that doesn't make any sense. What you need to do is sit down and go, just like the person before me said, and many people before me, and talk to the local businesses and ask them, how does it affect them? How has their revenue changed? How can you make this something that brings money to the community and keeps Cocoa Beach thriving? Because the I Dream of Genie days are over. You want to stay on the map? Don't send it to Cape Canaveral. Don't keep sending it to other places. Keep people here. That's why I come here. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right. Somebody want to kick it off?
I kicked off last time. I appreciate the turnaround. I think the current ordinance at 11 o'clock is plainly audible, so I'm not sure why that threshold is so subjective. I mean, there's, that's what's triggering the noise to stop at 11 or to tone down. So I'm in favor of it. I think it's right in line with what we proposed. I didn't hear any other options on the table.
You're in favor of what?
Of the ordinance as it's written.
Oh, the one that we, the one that we came up with? Guys, public comment's going to be over. The one we came up with or the, or the existing one?
What's in the agenda? 1678.
Yes, what's in the agenda is essentially, I mean, more than essentially, it's exactly y'all had decided on. And so I just wanted to send it to you so that you'd have it in writing. You'd know what it was going to come back. If you want it to come back for first reading, this is what it will be.
I still don't support this without a study from a certified acoustic engineer. I'm like, well, downtown. You can't make regulations if you don't know what you're dealing with technically. So that's where I stand with this.
All right. Vice Mayor?
There's a lot to be said with a lot of the comments. And honestly, my dad actually said it last week. It's all about respect. And if people aren't going to respect each other, there has to be laws made to help people respect each other.
You've got to respect the residents.
Sorry. Yeah, we respect the residents. So here's the, here's the problem. It's obviously too loud right now. Whether or not it's an enforcement issue or whatever it is, we got to figure out a way to make this work for the businesses and for the residents. I don't want to hurt business at all. I am 100% pro-business. The comment the young guy made. The comment the young guy made, I don't know if you could call him young, but about the rocket launches, that's, that's 30 seconds. It's not all night long. So there's a difference there. Raylene, I know your, your husband would be affected by this. He is a DJ and he does DJ at, at 142. And I'll be, I'll be fully transparent. I actually advertise Area 142 on the radio station that I run. So don't think that it wouldn't affect me as well. But that being said, I can't let, I can't let my personal stuff interfere with what's really going on with the residents. I think we need to be fair to the residents. And if you can hear that music from five blocks away, it's clearly too loud. And the parking, oh, it might affect parking. And I would love to get $30 a head, by the way, but we're not. You know, in my opinion, who, I don't really care how much money we make on the parking if, if the residents are racking their heads against the wall all night long because it's just too loud. I think 500 feet after, I mean, 500 feet up to 11 o'clock is reasonable. I think if it's, if it doesn't work, we'll have to adjust it then, but I feel like that's reasonable. I feel like we're not trying to hurt your business on the weekends. I mean, that's when the bulk, I mean, Sandbar is busy all the time, so I get it, man. You guys, you guys are racking in the dough. But you know, for the most part, most businesses are mostly busy on Friday and Saturday nights. And that, and that's the reason why I think it's important to keep it up until 11. But at 9 o'clock, when, when we're in the, in the downtown area where residents are, people want to go to sleep and wake up in the morning and be rested to go to work. So we gotta, we gotta, we gotta try to work together. And I feel like with what we came up with and we kind of all talked about it, this is something that can work, I believe, for the residents and for the business owners alike. It's 11 o'clock, by the way, not 10 o'clock, 321 Eats. So it wasn't 10 o'clock like you're saying. And I don't really know that you guys are that busy during the weekdays either. I think it's mostly on the weekends, but I, I'm not sure because like you said, I haven't been there. I will actually come in and talk to you guys and see you guys. I don't want to, I don't want to put regulations on you guys to hurt you. I'm trying to work with you guys and work with the residents, and that's why I went through a lot of this stuff. So that's, that's basically all I can say. Go ahead.
We did move in to say discuss this.
Yep. Lori, was this advertised as a first reading?
No, it was just for discussion.
All right, so we're just going to discuss it. I was mentioning a technicality that this wasn't advertised as the first reading. It's only advertised for discussion. So that means two weeks from now, it'll come back from, for a first reading. And theoretically, two weeks from then, it would come back for a second reading. So the subliminal message is maybe if everybody can get along and tune it down a little bit, within the next month, we could table this and, and just wait. And then if it just ratchets back up, then we're going to, we're just going to have to pass it.
I would be okay with tabling it also if, if they, if they, if everybody can get plain ice.
So, and as the Vice Mayor said, you know, if this works, if we have to put this in place and it, and it works or it doesn't work, if it doesn't work, then we got to change it again. So this is basically, you know, a little clairvoyance here that we're, our intentions are, if we get the vote, we, we discussed it, unless somebody says now that it's not going to come back for a first reading, the normal process would be it would come back from a first reading at our next meeting. And then two weeks from then, at the following meeting, maybe at three weeks, depending on where the first and third Thursday fall. But, so let's see what happens.
Can I just say one more thing too? And actually, I do want to point out that Area 142, I did notice that they did try something different, so I want to give them kudos for that. They did turn the stage and put the speakers down further. So I do want to acknowledge that I do see that you business owners are trying to work on different things. So thank you for that as well.
When we continue on with this the next couple of weeks and the weeks after, how are we going to determine whether it gets better or not? That nobody complains or a certain number of people complain? What, I just want to know like criteria, like how do we know it's getting better and then we can pull it, we can, what is everybody thinking?
Well, Jeremy lives right down the road and so does Skip, and I think if they can hear it, then they would know.
I hear it from a lot of people. I, I hear from a lot of people, a lot of people call me and, and I see people around town and they talk. So if I'm not hearing, if, if I'm hearing that the noise has improved, then I'll be able to bring that back. But I don't think there's, you know, we're not going to put out a poll, you know, through some, you know, 4% of the people in Cocoa Beach responded to the poll and call that scientific and statistically relevant, you know, you can't do that. So let's just move on for here, from here, looking for a first reading and see if anything changes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I hope we can find a balance. For those of you that weren't here at the last meeting, Connie was here. Connie's owned the Beach Shack for 40 years. I've never gotten a complaint from the Beach Shack. She has live music every weekend. Actually, I got one complaint. I stand corrected. It was the short-term rentals that are just south of Coconut's, literally on the ocean. So again, if you buy a building next to 20 bars and you complain about noise, I'm sorry, but government can't fix that. That is your own stupidity. Don't complain about bar noise when you move next to a bar. That being said, Connie, the way she's managed it is very simple. Her music is outside till 6:00 PM. She has a row of vegetation and hedges to block the noise from carrying. After 6:00, there's live music. There's been some really good bands in there. I know Carolyn, you played in there. Inside, the doors are shut, the speakers face the ocean. I've never gotten a complaint. It's really that simple, guys. We don't mind live music, but I'm tired of getting 50 emails every week there is a venue or something going on. You know, the residents have rights too. They live here. They are the taxpayers as well and they vote. So please, work with us to make it work. All you got to do is turn it down.
Want to close? We have a motion in a second?
What we had, that was just to discuss.
To discuss. We did discuss. So I think we have a course of action?
Yes, it'll come back.
It'll come back. All right, everybody's here for the budget? Nope? All right. Not the free beer either. We're just going to get, city attorney, K3.
Thank you, Mayor. Item K3. Consider the request for a lack, no confidence vote by the city commission on the performance of the city manager, Robin R. Hayes. Representative Commissioner Skip Williams. Recommendation, consider the request.
Move to consider.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I've got lots of cards here. I'd like to hear from the public. Jessica Hope.
Commissioners, I'll try to speak loud. I am a very monotone person and I was hesitant to even speak in regards to this. I would like to preface this, that I am a full-time employee with the city and a full-time college student at Barre University. I have had to, if I had to pick one word to describe the city or management operations before Ms. Hayes, it would be stagnant. Anytime an employee concern would arise, the most common response would be, "This is how it has always been. This is how it is." Or slow, along the lines that slow is acceptable because it's the government. Of these comments, not one of them sounds like a place where there is a promoted culture of growth. If anything, it would lead as a warning for new employees or even current employees that there is a limited progress or opportunity of growth within the organization. I'm not saying this is how every scenario was or has been addressed, but that it has not, it was not uncommon to have the conception that it would be a timely process for change or to achieve any results. If anything, the atmosphere and attitude of employees plateaued with both consent and complaisance. Since Ms. Hayes has started here, she has been proactive with all concerns that were brought to her attention and promotes a culture of opportunity. While there are many, there were many tasks at stake, it was like a dark cloud had been over the city for some time and started to move. Light began shining on everyone. Ms. Hayes has taken the time to quickly evaluate positions throughout the city, employees, both their current and previous work experience, wage grades, a complicated topic compared to our previous wage table that is accompanied with compression issues, especially when comparing it to our competitors, whether it's neighboring municipalities or companies like SpaceX in the private sector. She encourages education and training for all employees and empowers employees from the bottom up, in my opinion. This is particularly important for an individual seeking to better themselves. At the university I go to, I share classes with fellow municipal employees who are facing similar issues as us in regards to recruiting and retention challenges within their organization, many of which include senior or longtime employees that prevent their employees from aspiring to be better. There is a competitive market right now for the workforce and we need to emphasize how to separate ourselves from our competitors, make our positions desirable for both retaining and recruiting. We are in a workforce that includes five different generations, all of which add value to promoting a diverse culture. That is not to say there is not challenges in accommodating individuals. That is not to say that is not challenges in accommodating individuals' learning, management styles or previous processes. Ms. Hayes is transparent. She conveys with, an open dialogue with all employees, communicates effectively regardless of an individual's background. As it stands, a lot of newer generations entering the workforce, work, do you want me to stop? Okay, sorry. Ms. Hayes is transparent. She conveys an open dialogue with all employees and communicates effectively regardless of an individual's background. As it stands, a lot of the newer generations entering the workforce are not looking to work somewhere to be complacent with what has been in an organization. They want to work somewhere where they can feel they can grow and contribute to a bigger cause. And in my opinion, Ms. Hayes promotes that culture as she is accommodating for everyone. I have witnessed employees that were unhappy in positions or environments or their environments, and Ms. Hayes was quick to move them in different settings where they could better utilize their skill set or previous work experience. Something that traditionally would have taken weeks of figuring out of how to handle this situation. She promotes a positive atmosphere that is fluid to any change, something any workplace would pride themselves in. I remember last year, I believe it was, watching a commission meeting about whether it was Westgate or building a new city hall, and the mayor had made a comment about how he wished 20 years ago that he had jumped on the redevelopment bandwagon in building their cities like other cities did. And I feel like this vote would be similar in regards to a missed opportunity if you were to remove Ms. Hayes from her position.
Deputy, deputy chief, Wes Mullins?
Okay. Wes Mullins, deputy police chief and resident for the last 10 years. So I've been here off and on for the last 22 years at the police department. And when Ms. Hayes came on board, I had my own preconceived notions as to some history. And I was completely incorrect, completely wrong, completely misinformed, misguided, and I'm sorry for that. And she knows that. I've, she and I've shared some pretty heavy conversations about leadership, about doing the right thing, and doing the right thing is hard. It's easy to get on and say what you want to say on social media without knowing facts. She knows the facts. Everything that's happening right now, she knows. And every one of these people here, in the last 22 years, have never, ever stood up as a team before, her, never. In my 22 years here, we have never seen an outpouring of support and team unity that she has actually created and fostered. Now, I don't speak to the policy side, but that's not my job. My job is to follow her leadership and then force her views down to our team, and I think we've all done that. And seeing everybody here is proof positive of that. It's proof positive of that. Doing the ethical thing is hard. Doing the right thing is hard. Doing the easy thing is lazy and cheap. And it's not worth this commission, it's not worth this community. This community deserves better. They deserve an honest shot with the city manager like she's given all of us an opportunity. So thank you very much.
Rob Strong.
Well, I got to tell you, I'm in contrast and I love and respect these guys, the gals that worked with them for a number of years. I've got a very contrasting situation that just recently happened to me and, you know, I felt obligated to share with the commission, so you all can make a balanced decision. Again, we've got a number of people behind me speaking otherwise and that's, I applaud I started here with the city in 2003 in September. And, you know, most of you folks know me, my background, what I've done over the time, over those years for the city, different projects and things like that, so I won't get into all those details. On January 19th, I was asked to attend a meeting and there was several of the staff in there, Ms. Hayes, our public works director, city engineer, Natalie from Personnel, Rain. And I was given a letter, a letter that informed me that funding, as it says in the hand that I'm giving to you guys, funding for my position will be reallocated moving forward. And, but like I said, it's a bit shocking from what I just heard here. The letter indicated that I only had two weeks to prepare to retire, and that's after being here for 19 and a half years. And with a great record. You know, that shocked me. My goal's always been to achieve 20 years, which would have been this coming September. And then of course, like moving on, my 70th birthday would have been next January. So that was just my personal goals. It always has been, got so close to it, and I get handed a letter with other staff saying, "Well, you got two weeks to pack up and get out." And that's, we're changing things. Okay? So I had a follow-up meeting, which is also covered in that hand that I'll give you folks. And the follow-up meeting, the city manager, to make things a little bit more bearable with some of the time to prepare. And this wasn't easy to take at all because I love working here. I love the staff, I love my job. During that meeting, the city manager and myself and requested that, the city manager requested that I write a letter of resignation. It was quite an interesting turn of events there because I was given a letter the day before to prepare to leave in two weeks. Didn't say anything but resigning. Okay, make that clear. And that's why you've got the letter. So in return, we, during that meeting, the city manager and myself requested a letter of resignation, and in return, I received four weeks' severance pay that would go back through April 1st, giving me four weeks' severance pay. That noted in my hand, you know, written comments there, in her handwritten comments. I've attached PDF of the letter the city manager sent to me, initial it, as I mentioned above, for your reference, so you see all the detail there. I'm just laying it all in your lap so you can make a clear decision on how things operate. Also, a copy of the notes that were taken, I think Natalie took the notes during that meeting with everybody, and that was a nice and neater layout of that, so you can understand that as well. Considering my history with the history of the city and the projects that I've taken throughout the years, I truly believe that, you know, being given I truly believe that, you know, I'd be given more respect than I recently experienced. And that said, and again, I mean, even with the staff back here, you could ask any of them, I've worked with them over the years, all sorts of things. And I know some of you who know me from many years back, the record that I've had as well, personally and professionally. Again, I'm clueless why it happened. You know, it just didn't add up. And that's why I gotta, you know, share my feelings on this. Yeah, so if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to ask. But all I say, ask, because what I experienced, it's such a contrast with what I'm seeing here this evening. I wish I could say otherwise, but I've got to share with you what I experienced so it doesn't happen to another employee. Not to be able to change those details that quickly, that easily, and just give somebody who's been here for almost 20 years all, just shy away from all personal goal in a career, to say, bye, no real reason why, just reallocating your funds. Thank you very much. So, had to bring it up to you, the commission. I wanted you to know, you all decide on what you need to do or how you need, and there's just things moving forward so it doesn't happen to anybody else. At this point, I've resolved things with myself and I'm moving on to enjoy retirement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Q.
Good evening, mayor, commission. My name is Chris Kewen. I'm a major over patrol operations with the Cocoa Beach Police Department. I've been employed as a police officer for the city of Cocoa Beach since 2005. Ms. Hayes is the sixth city manager I've worked under in the past 17 years and the third as a member of command staff. I've witnessed Ms. Hayes maintain positive constructive relationships with elected officials and employees when those same standards were not reciprocated. Ms. Hayes serves the community with the highest degree of ethics. She's knowledgeable in modern practices and principles of accounting and budgeting. She identifies alternative solutions to complex problems. Mayor, commission, I am charged with ensuring the fine men and women of our department execute operations in adherence to established rules, regulations, and laws. Our number one goal is to provide a safe city for our residents and tourists. While doing so, I have full confidence in Mrs. Hayes' judgment and ability to lead our team.
Wayne Carrigino.
Thank you. Wayne Carrigino, 945 South Gravard Avenue. And I'm also an employee of the city. I've come to know and work with Robin for the last year and a half. And I've seen some of what's happening here on the cesspool of social media, a lot of disinformation, a lot of misinformation, and a lot of just plain lies. Robin has always emphasized her prioritization of employees first. And I just want to say that if you come to work to make a change and to make a difference and to accomplish things, she'll support you 150%. She's open to all ideas. And I'll make this short and sweet, but I have the most respect, the most admiration for her. And I think she's a true leader. And I've seen other city managers, I've been here for 15 years. And I just think it would be an absolute mistake for the city, for the staff, to not support her at this point in time. Thank you.
Sergeant Cooper.
Good evening. Commissioners, many of you know me, but those that don't, my name is Thomas Cooper. I'm a detective sergeant with the police department's criminal investigations division. I've been a loyal and hardworking city employee for almost 21 years here. I consider this agency and Cocoa Beach to be my home. I am proud to put on this uniform and serve the city as well as its citizens and visitors alike. I come before you to speak on a possible decision made by you tonight that could have major ramifications to me and the majority of the members of the police department. A possible vote of no confidence by you for the city manager, Robin Hayes. I will not discuss with you in public, in this public forum, those allegations concerning our department. But what I want you to know is how professional and upstanding Robin Hayes has been in regards to this incident. In my time here, I have served under several city managers. All had great qualities. All of them but Robin Hayes, in my opinion, has far exceeded the norm. She has displayed a steadfast conviction on ensuring that the issue that currently plagues my department is handled ethically and morally correct to prevent any issues with the rights of due process for some. This is a fine line that law enforcement has to maintain when we conduct criminal investigations. I have sat back and read some of the disgusting attacks and comments on social media posts about the city manager and members of my department these last few months. Several times, I have opened up a comment thread and began typing rebuttal to defend her and other members of the department, only to delete the comment because I would not want to jeopardize a person's right of due process. I personally know a lot of these people that are posting. I know if they were presented with the facts from someone that they know, that these types of negative comments would not even be posted in the first place. But sometimes the right thing to do is not to comment at all. I've had the pleasure of working with Robin Hayes in several different capacities at the city. She has always been respectful and knowledgeable. And when it came to the issues with the city emergency services, she has stated her support and then followed through with helping us be the best that we can be, not just the employees, but for the citizens alike. Robin has moved this city forward and has updated, as well as modernized, many of our departments, which were long overdue. Based on her evaluation by you guys, on March 2nd, you guys agree with what I'm saying. To vote no confidence for her would be a great injustice, not to the citizens of Cocoa Beach, but to everyone. Let me finish with a leadership quote from author Kenneth Thomas. Make sure you're not just waiting for someone else to fix things or hoping that things will improve. Figure out what's going on and make the plans to prove them. Thank you.
Jackie Hughes.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Hughes and I'm a sergeant here with the city. Some of you may already know me. I've been an employee for just over eight years, two years short of finally being invested with the city. I represent 50% of the female officers with the police department. So, those of you who are not math savvy, I am one of only two female officers with this department. Now, there have been other officers that we may have in the future and there have been officers in the past. Some of them have left with a settlement from the city, its public record. My own experience and knowledge have shown me that a strong female presence is not accepted here in the city. Ms. Hayes has been the first glimmer of hope that I have had in many years that change is coming. Ms. Hayes has done more positive things for the police department in the short time she has been here than any city manager in the past. She has taken the time to listen to our concerns when others have not and started the movement to make the dim future bright for us. I'm not trying to make this into a girl power movement, but perhaps it actually is. It's been a good old boy club for far too long. It's been a one hand washes the other mentality. There have been many favors exchanged. And unfortunately, in the weeks to come, the skeletons are going to come out of the closet. The residents, the media, we are all about to know. So, Ms. Hayes, I say directly to you, thank you. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you for giving us hope of change. And I'm sorry that hearing the truth is hard for others to accept. I'm sorry that you are being blamed as the problem. It's an easy out instead of recognizing what the real problem is. City commission, I say to you, don't turn to blind eye to what this is really about. It's not about Ms. Hayes, so do the right thing.
Good evening. My name is Bill Stanley. I represent one of the members of the road patrol of the Cocoa Beach Police Department. I've been employed by the city as a police officer since 2020. Before being stowed the honor of serving the great people of Cocoa Beach, I was self-employed for 30 years, working alongside various faith-based organizations and other NGOs. So, if you're doing math, this is a career change for me at 50 years old. I am that TV show, The Rookie, yes. But if you've also been paying attention in the news, you know that my beloved faith-based organizations have had some issues over the years in terms of their leadership, top level, very charismatic leadership, sometimes not operating in which they should. And even though I won't speak, as Detective Cooper, Sergeant Cooper mentioned, we won't speak publicly about that, it is important to note that I have sat many times, this is not my first day, in terms of dealing with something like this. In fact, I've actually had to watch some of the best friends in my life be accused of things. Some later shown to be unfounded, but many of them found to be true, and rightly so, their leadership removed. If history has taught me anything, it has taught me that we must allow the process to play out. Both the accused and the accuser deserve our attention to detail and our patience. Often, when things like this happen, we take sides. A charismatic leader gets all his people and everybody else tries to, that tries to then support the accuser is their claims are dismissed, they're vilified as being told they're weak, or sometimes sadly, in faith-based organizations and police organizations that should be leading the charge of the dignity of people, especially women, we have told them to find their place and know their role. No one understands the desire for closure more than my brothers and sisters here in the city and our police department. We want closure, but what we want is the truth. And that is going to take time to do it right. And our city manager has been transparent, thank you for that. She has been open and honest and she has led us valiantly through this process. Because of all the persons involved, both the accused and the accuser, we must understand that this process must take its due process. And the reason for that is, is because each of them have an inalienable dignity bestowed by their creator. We then cannot, with respect, jump the shark before the process is complete. This would say to all involved, including chief, you don't matter. We cannot put politics ahead of people and to remove the city manager at this juncture would be problematic. To shut the process down would lend a huge disservice to the people of our city that we have sworn to protect. To remove the city manager now would appear as a cover-up, I'm afraid. And the cover-up is always worse than the incident itself. In closing, I want to say I fully respect and support our city manager, Robin Hayes. And I ask you not, I ask you not only to vote to confirm your confidence in her, I actually would ask you, Commissioner Williams, as you've done already this evening, remove your motion from the table if the rules allow. There should not be a vote on this issue at this time. Please allow the investigation to conclude. For after all, we don't want to be on the wrong side of history to learn that the accusers were correct. And if Chief Rosenfeld is found to be innocent and returned to his employment, don't allow that to be under the cloud of a cover-up, the shroud of a cover-up by his allies on this city council. Thank you. I'm Bill Stanley. I apologize. I took my time.
Melissa Byron.
Melissa Byron, 3165 North Atlantic Avenue, Cocoa Beach. I'm really proud of all you guys. This takes an incredible amount of nerve to stand up here and talk. I have the unusual position of, that I worked for the city under Robin Hayes for six months. And I worked for the city for eight years prior to her. So, I know what kind of progress is. She is progress. She is a leader. She deserves every confidence to give her. Y'all voted on March 2nd that she was exceptional, two of you. Then you voted, two of you, saying she exceeded expectations. And one of you said she meets expectations. Anybody who works for any business understands, that's not a bad review. That's a very good review. So, now to come back and say we have a lack of confidence, quit reading social media. Quit talking to people who have no idea what's going on. Listen to your staff. This is her staff, but they represent the city. They're there every day. They interact with her every day. Not the keyboard combat, you know, they don't interact with her. They just complain. They have their own opinions, their own conjections, their own, let's make this something it isn't. She is a great leader. I would serve under her at any time. I have an incredible amount of confidence. And she's a great person. I respect her. I will say that as a citizen, she is very open. And she is knowledgeable. We have not had this kind of knowledge in eight years. Don't blow it. She deserves your vote of confidence, not lack of.
Marge Schneider.
My name is Marge Schneider. I live at 191 Seminole Lane, Cocoa Beach. And I am not an employee. I'm a citizen. I came here because when I saw the agenda, I quite frankly was at a loss as to the reason for a request for a vote of no confidence for the city manager. As Melissa pointed out, I also had heard that it was in February or March, a review. Ms. Hayes went under review. And to a person, it was either, except for one person, either exceeds expectations or excellent, which was the top two reviews. And in fact, I think you were given a raise because of your exemplary work. So, I could not figure out why this was on there. I got my Cocoa Beach Explorer magazine today and I read the mayor's letter. And the mayor's letter contained a laundry list of very exciting things for Cocoa Beach that are happening under Ms. Hayes' stewardship. Not the least of which is $32 million grant for a, for I think improvements in the Banana River, which is just unbelievable, unbelievable. Personally, I think Ms. Hayes is smart, professional, and ethical. I hope you will agree by putting this vote of no confidence in the trash and keeping our tremendously qualified asset as our city manager. Thank you.
Deputy Fire Chief, Justin Grimes.
Good evening again, commission. Thank you for the ability to speak tonight. Justin Grimes, deputy chief of the fire department. I'm only up here to urge you to take some time to really make an educated decision. Just as the last speaker said, I could not believe that this was actually going on. I beg you, talk to real people. Look at all of these people that are here. Talk to real people. Get off of social media. Social media is fake news, embellishment. You're rewarded for clicks. You're rewarded for bad behavior. You get the clicks, you get the likes. That kind of stuff is driving our society the wrong direction. That kind of stuff is driving our society the wrong direction. I only say this because as an almost 20-year employee and a deputy department head, because the majority of this commission has not even come to me to ask me what kind of job our city manager is doing. So to bring this up now, quite frankly, is just appalling. So please take your time. Talk to real people. Flesh people that talk, not a computer. Make an educated decision. We have a talented city manager who's been working hard and has progressed this city faster in one year than I've seen in the last 17. There's going to be growing pains with progress. It's not going to be easy. It's going to get worse sometimes before it gets better. Just don't take this decision lightly. Do your research and make a truly informed decision. Thank you.
Brad Kelso?
Good evening, Brad Kelso, Water Reclamation Director. I could stand up here and reiterate everything that my colleagues have said, but I am a man of few words, and I want to keep it short and brief. Ms. Hayes, you have my full support. You have my full confidence. Thank you for everything that you've been doing, and I will wake up every day to come work for you. Thank you.
Our Fire Chief, Ryan Duckworth.
Hello, Ryan Duckworth, Fire Chief, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Usually I have eloquent statements to make or just some sort of good information to share with the public and our elected officials. I had to go to this one and understand, there's some personal side, and I'll start with that. My heart hurts, I wish I could stop all the hateful words with Deputy Chief Grimes related. The hurtful things that are said where you're rewarded for bad things or attention. I wasn't raised that way. I was raised by my mom and dad and every generation in my family that if you respect someone, they have to earn it. I still have not gathered the nerve to call Ms. Hayes by her first name. I cannot call her that. I have tried every way, I can do it if my wife makes me, but it's just about a gunpoint. So I wanted to qualify instead of quantify, because I've heard so many eloquent things said here. It's very moving to me, I'm trying to make sure that I stay on a valid path that relate my true feelings. So as in my, as so labeled by my previous boss, Tim McKnight, the data geek, I like to list things out that have actually happened. So this is not anything that's made up. So I made bullet points, and I'm just going to read them. These are things that have happened because Ms. Hayes made them happen for us and worked with us. She set aside time to openly speak to each director to listen. It's the first time I've ever had that, say, tell me what the problems are. If we ran out of time, she'd give us more time and we'd have a one-on-one. There was no, there was no impending feeling. She inquired about challenges and what could be done to help problems such as, any problems our employees were having, any kind of operations, any inter-local agreements that weren't working. She trusts city employees and she does not micromanage. It makes me feel like a million dollars, I want to come to work. She's rebirthed something inside me, it's like the fire. And I can't get enough of it. She studied the city budget, she streamlined account management, she realized savings that were already there, we didn't even know it. She's a financial genius, I call her the razor. It's the first time I've ever said that in public. Comprehensive, studied the city as a whole, she knows how the government works. We have face-to-face meetings. She always listens. She never makes you feel down. She holds you accountable. She makes a strategy. She's single-handedly saved us from terrible situations that are coming up in active right now from other governments that are setting up certain things for us to take care of certain things. She's about five or six steps ahead of every single thing I've done. Also, as I sit here, something has happened. We now have an auto aid agreement with Brevard County. Our effective response force went up already, but there was no fanfare, there was no love, talk about it. So now when you call 911, you're guaranteed you're going to get five fire trucks, and maybe a ladder truck and two rescues. You're going to have like, a lot of firefighters to help you or your relative in whatever kind of emergency you're having. The automatic aid agreement gave me the clarity that if it's something we've been working on for so long, I'm sorry, but we've reached goals that we've only dreamed of. And I even made fun of Deputy Chief Grimes saying, well, I guess I'll just write all this stuff down, you can get it approved, because we thought about it a long time ago. She took the time to listen. She maintains composure even in the most difficult circumstances, and she's courageous, and she does not back down from tough situations. So I'll say this for the first and only time, Robin, I want you in my foxhole. Thank you.
Patricia Draycott?
Good evening, Patricia Draycott, the City of Cocoa Beach CFO. I'm going to tell you in my position, it's very hard some days to make the decisions that we need to do. It's hard to take the moral route, to take the ethical route. It's hard to stand by that. And if you don't have the support of your supervisor and your leadership, sometimes you can't even make those decisions in the right way. You have to stand by those values, and you have to stand strong, and you have to empower your employees to be able to make those decisions and the right decisions for our citizens. And Robin Hayes has done that for her directors. She's brought together a lot of people with very strong opinions, very strong personalities, and brought us together to work as a team in an efficient and effective way. When, it's easy to sit back and coast. It's easy to take the easy path. It's easy to step back and say, I'm not going to make these hard decisions, I'm just going to ride it through. It's very hard to stand up and make hard decisions and to stand up and say, I'm going to do this and I'm going to push through. We have seen a lot of positive change that's happened in the last 14 months since Robin came on board. One of those is the new city hall. How long have we been talking about a city hall? Robin is pushing that through. Every single time I come to her with a budget problem or a financial problem, she gives absolute attention to what I'm saying, to my concerns, and then she gives good feedback and good direction so that we can constantly improve our processes and deliver better, better product to you, the commissioners, and to you, the citizens, to make sure that you're getting the best you can from us. I think that we've had a history of city managers that really haven't stood strong and taken that hard path and made those hard choices. And I think it would be wrong to penalize her for doing that.
Kevin Perez?
Good evening, my name is Kevin Perez. I've been with the city's IT department for 10 years. I guess I just want to say that I have so much respect for you. Making those tough decisions so we can progress when others have just let it go because it was too hard. Giving us so much support and always doing what's right. We've never felt this level of support before. So thank you. And under her leadership, I couldn't be happier to be part of this city's future. So on behalf of the entire IT team, you have our full support. Thank you.
Donna Herring? We've got plenty of firefighters here in case you...
My name is Donna Herring, I'm a resident of Cocoa Beach, have been for 38 years. And I just wanted to glom onto what everybody else is saying, and I just came here to show my support to our city manager, and I hope that you all support her as well.
Thank you. Dr. Smallwood?
Yes, I'm Kristin Smallwood, and I live at 56 Crystal River Drive. I was born and raised in Cocoa Beach. And I don't think you know how long we've known each other. I've known you since 1992. And through this whole time, she has been a reliable, dependent, intelligent, and efficient person, and a pleasure to know and interact with. She also, this is just a little thing compared to that, but I did, because I love Cocoa Beach, I gave the astronaut surfer to Cocoa Beach, and the whole bottom was falling apart, just, you know, the stucco was off, the little medallions that were the history. And I just mentioned it to her, and I went up there about a month later, and it was all fixed. It was just perfect. And that's how she works. She's professional, she's efficient, and she just gets it done. So we need to keep her. Thank you.
Mike Miller? You want to come back, Commissioner? Sorry, no offense. I'm talking 24.
Thank you.
There'll be a vacancy or two.
I'm here to speak in support of Robin Hayes. For the duty that I invite everybody in the audience who's come out in support of her to stand now and to show the support along with me. So do I have confidence in Robin Hayes? Yes, I do, and I speak with a certain amount of experience and authority. My last year I served with Robin and worked with her directly on many things related to the commission. Over eight years on the commission, we had four city managers. That in itself is a statement that is problematic, in my opinion. We need some continuity and some longevity, and I think we found the right person to do it. She's highly experienced. Most importantly, what's important to everybody, citizens out here, is are we providing as a city government the services that they come to expect? And I think we have. Robin has made some changes, she meets problems head-on, takes corrective action, and makes the changes that need to happen. So I think we've seen significant improvements in the city during her tenure, and I appreciate that you have been doing that. Changing a city manager is a big step. It's a step backwards because you'd lose continuity. We had to do that four times while I was on the commission. Don't underestimate that. There'll be a penalty both financially and operationally. And I'm not sure that we can afford that. Especially since I believe that she's doing what we're paid her to do, providing city services for those of us, the citizens of Cocoa Beach. So I'm relying on you, the city commission, to represent the citizens of Cocoa Beach. This is really not about you five up on here, on the sitting at the dais, it's about us out here in the community, and I would invite you to do the right thing. You know, to quote a sports analogy, football teams that change their coaches frequently do so in desperation and they often fail. If you look at the most successful teams in the NCAA, it's Alabama, Clemson, Michigan, and others who are always ranked in the top. Why? Because they stay with their coaches and they support them, and they get performance. I'm hoping that we decide to do that as well. Thank you.
Latham Kellum?
I think I had a speech prepared, but I didn't expect this crowd. And I'll try to keep it below three minutes because per my math, there's about nine more hours of speeches to be gone through. But yeah, it's tough. I come to you as a resident first. I'm also, I'm entering my 26th year as an employee of Cocoa Beach Fire Department. Started in 1998. I've been through, I believe this is my eighth city manager. Been through about four fire chiefs and probably about 45 to 50 hurricanes. So you got a lot of face time during these storms with different individuals. And she was no exception. She was dugging with us in the last one, so. I think the crowd behind me tells you what there's between a manager and a leader is. And I think you guys lucked out, you found a leader. So a couple downturns in economic cycles, some raises, you know, up and downs, about two really hard downturns in the economy. And it was hard to recruit that talent. And talent became something that we couldn't afford. And I believe now, talent is something that you can't afford to lose. So that's my two cents, and I'm down at two minutes, so. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Do you have any other public comment? Mary? Gotcha.
KP Finger, 190 Seminole Lane. I just want to share an observation with you guys. I usually come to the Tuesday with the city manager meetings, even before your time. And from my observation, when I saw her putting all the department heads in that meeting and pushing her department heads to speak up and talk, this cannot be the sign of any bad manager. This is a sign of a very good manager.
Ms. Turner?
Good evening, I'm Mary Turner, 200 Waring Way. I think you all know me. I was employed with the city for the last 11 years, and I just retired a few weeks ago. But I have worked as the executive assistant to the city manager for all those years, under six different city managers, including Robin. Prior to working for the city, sorry, legal assistant for 30 years. I believe I have a pretty good idea of the responsibilities and duties of a city manager and what goes on behind the scenes that many people are not aware of. With my legal experience, I also am very aware of when there's a problem, you need to do your research slowly, correctly. Read it, understand it, get your facts, and only the facts. Not what you want to read or want to see or hear from someone else. When Mrs. Hayes was hired, she inherited a plethora of issues that several prior city managers did not want to address. Robin addressed these issues by meeting with each department and their directors. They worked as a team, studied their departments, finding ways to solve the problems and how to improve employee morale and recognition. Robin's mantra has always been, this is your department, you own it, you know it. Know your budget, know your staff issues, work hard efficiently and in a timely manner. Robin is diligent. She does not drag her feet. And anyone that's worked with her knows that she keeps you on your toes. She works hard, she works in a timely manner, and she expects the same from all the employees. But she's very fair, and she acknowledges all the employees' hard work. Robin is smart. She lives and breathes city government. She's ethical, she's fair, and she has the best interest of the city, the citizens, and the employees at heart at all times. This agenda item requests a discussion on a vote for lack of confidence in the city manager. My question is, where is the due diligence that's required for such a vote like this? As you discuss this matter, I hope you remember that Mrs. Hayes has an open-door policy for employees, commission members, and citizens. She will meet with anyone who so requests. Her knowledge of city government has helped this commission, as well as employees and citizens. When discussing this, please ask yourselves, are you listening to one or two unhappy people? Or are you getting opinions from every citizen? Or have you asked for input from each department and director and not focusing on just one department? Wake up, Cocoa Beach is not the proper form to get your information. Just one more second. To be a good city manager, you must be a visionary. You must have the ability to make tough decisions. You must have the ability to make tough decisions about the city's future. It is not an easy job, and it is not for the faint of heart. Robin has shown that she's very capable to perform in this job. She has to deal with many people of diverse backgrounds and opinions. She handles controversies and challenging problems, and does it with diplomacy and empathy. She has served with competency and fairness. You should allow her to continue the job that she has so professionally shown that she is capable of.
Any more public comment? I do have one that somebody wants to read. Mayor Timonti.
Good evening. I'm Tim Timonti, 59-year-old resident of Cocoa Beach. I'm getting a little bit clapped right now. I did, as soon as they stood up and I saw them walking out here, this is just absolutely, absolutely amazing. So I was going to read some of my credentials, just because I'm not just a resident. I'm involved in a lot of different things. I'm on the Golf Course Task Force, City Hall Task Force. I'm on the Leisure Board, been on the Leisure Board for seven years. I'm currently the Chair. Former President of Cocoa Beach Main Street for six years. Vice Chair of the Cocoa Beach Art Show for 10 years. Former Commissioner, and former mayor. There's been a lot of talk about how awesome Robin is, and it's all true. I've been through and seen a lot of city managers. Robin is what we have been looking for. This is what we've needed for a long time, and she's finally here. And now, for some ridiculous reason, there's a vote of no confidence has been brought forward. And I say it's ridiculous, but it's not a surprise. It's not a surprise because of why it's coming forward and what it's coming from. It was already mentioned earlier about the exceptional evaluations. Three exceptional, one exceeds expectations, and the other one meets expectations. But there's one comment in here that really, really stands forward. It's like this is a red herring of this other issue going on, covering up what's, the purpose of this particular issue of no confidence. In the comments, it says, "Stymying of commissioners from conversing with city staff at meetings is very new to me. Seems like a top-down stovepipe management practice, but it does force cohesiveness in staff." What that's referring to is what we call ethics on the Commission. There's a Section 2.09 prohibition subsection C. It says, "Except for purposes of Commission inquiries and investigations, the Commission and its members shall deal with city employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the city manager solely through the city manager. Not directly, but going through the city manager before you go to the city employees. And neither the Commission nor its members shall give orders to any such employee, either publicly or privately." That, thank you. What that's saying is it's unethical for someone on the Commission, at your level, to reach out to city employees. The city employees, as a Commissioner, they think that you can hire and fire them. So they're going to do whatever you tell them to do. Just, I mean, to a certain point, right? That's what's going to happen. So that's why that rule is there, to go through the city manager. The city manager is their boss, not the Commission. The Commission, you take, you go through the city manager. And that's my point with this, is that it's just ridiculous, and that's the only reason this is being brought forward, as a no confidence. Robin, you have my total support. One anecdote I want to say, I've had several, in all the things that I deal with, Friday Fests, and Art Show, and other things. I've had several meetings with Robin, and it is amazing how much knowledge she has. And I believe it's because of the communication she has with her directors. So I went in there with 10, 15 questions. She answered them like that. Like she had them right on the tip of her tongue, had them ready to go. No other city manager has done anything like that, or been able to do that. But I'm sure it's through communicating with, on a weekly basis, and some of these daily basis with their directors. So getting rid of Robin would be the absolute worst thing you could possibly do right now. And the fact that we're even talking about it is ridiculous. But again, not so.
Any other public comment? I'm just going to read one that I got, that they asked me to read. This is from former Commissioner Dylan, who is actually my opponent, by the way, so. She actually reached out to me. So you can get along with people. I'm writing to address Agenda Item K3. Robin Hayes, CEO of the City of Cocoa Beach, is doing her job and doing it well. In conjunction with the city attorney, Robin is responsible to protect the city and her staff. The city manager is also responsible for the performance of all the city departments. If reports of discord and possible harassment are received, she is required to act. She and the city attorney have a duty to protect the city and see that the processes under the law are followed. Please do not subvert that process that allows the city attorney and city manager to do their job and follow the law. I applaud Robin's professionalism and bravery to do the right thing rather than ignore a difficult situation that puts herself in the line of fire. Many people like myself are not aware of all the facts and legal issues at hand. In today's climate of social media, I realize that commissioners are subject to pressure from various stakeholders. Since I've been there myself on several occasions, I can understand the difficulty. Emotions need to be temporarily set aside so that the process is completed and all the facts are uncovered. To consider terminating Robin for providing the necessary leadership to protect everyone involved would be an injustice to her and a loss to the citizens of Cocoa Beach. Please consider a way forward that will not be totally disruptive to our city staff and citizens, and possibly put the city in legal jeopardy. Please reject a vote of no confidence for our city manager, Robin Hayes. Commissioner, I'd really like to hear from you. My frustration with this is, I went through Ms. Hayes and asked if I could speak to every department head. I don't believe, sir, you did that due diligence. Nor did you take the time to talk to any of the police officers, like I did, about this other situation that we're going to be delving into. We're elected to make informed decisions. We have to do our homework. This isn't a fun thing to do all the time, but we have to make the right, smart decisions. That means doing your homework, talking to people, getting facts, and not relying on hearsay and social media to make your decision. It's absurd. How can you possibly say, after giving our city manager a glowing recommendation, or most of us, that there is an issue when nobody has talked to any of the department heads? Has anybody talked to all the department heads? I really would like to know for the record.
I've talked to a few, but not all of them. I've talked to all of them, but not about this subject.
Well, I'd like to hear what your thoughts are, sir. Yep?
Well, first of all, I give $1,000 to anybody that can trace me to any social media account, be it anonymous or otherwise. I have a government phone, I'm not allowed to use it for anything like that. I don't have, I'm not inclined to do anything at home on my computer that has anything to do with social media. I've got better things to do with my time. I understand that they're not the place that you learn all the facts, or you get the truth, or you get a straight story. So I depend on conversations with people, face-to-face. I depend on phone calls from people, and people in this city call me. And I've, you know, heard some things that are undocumented. And I didn't come here to, to make allegations in the public record against the city manager. I did, there are a couple things that are public record. And we got city manager, we got a, I think everybody got this. It was a letter from the HR Director about the departure of a couple of city employees. You're aware of that?
I am.
And why did we get that?
I believe the HR Director was asking information, and she was responding.
Asked by who? One of us?
By someone on Commission, or at least it was rumored that there was a question from Commission.
Did anyone on this Commission ask this question?
I did.
Okay. Okay.
I like to get facts before I make decisions. That's just the way I am.
Well, I'm curious why it would only address two employees.
I just asked for two that I was aware of.
And we heard from Mr. Rob Strong, a 19-and-a-half-year employee, earlier. He was told that funding for his position would be real allocated moving forward. He was close to his 20-year anniversary with the city. And he was offered a four-week severance package if he would write a letter of resignation by the city manager. And this is public record, because he dropped it off to us. But I can say that he's not the only one in this city, during the city manager's tenure, that got asked to resign and was offered a severance package. The first speaker, Jessica Hope, said that the city manager was real careful that if people weren't happy in what they were doing, or, you know, felt they could do more, that they moved those employees to areas where they could be more productive. Obviously, for this individual, Mr. Strong, that didn't happen. So just sticking with the things that are public record, I would ask the city attorney if it's a proper city process, and if it's legal under Florida law to offer a severance package to an employee in return for their resignation.
Only if they have a contract that calls for that. I mean, and I don't believe the city employees have agreements other than the city manager.
And I understand that's also the truth, so. So you're saying that we have an illegal action by the, by the city manager? I mean, it's a misuse of our taxpayer funds to give away four weeks' severance package to people, that's not part of their contract?
Unless there was an employment dispute. If it's in settlement of an employment dispute, which I looked at this, and I didn't see anything about a.
I don't see anything in Mr. Strong's writings that say that there was an employment dispute.
I'm saying I didn't see it. I read this.
So, you know, that bothers me. And I'm saying I have a lack of confidence in our city manager. And I put it on the agenda so I could go on record and say that. And I can take it to vote, see if anybody else agrees with me. But it's, you know, all this talk about it being, you know, terminating the city manager, that's not happening at this meeting. It does not happen. It's not been part of the process. So I would like to proceed with the vote?
Yeah, I have one more comment. I, I've been here for 11 years, I'm looking forward to being done, because I'm pretty fed up. I got to be honest. We have a decorum here that is constantly bullied. Commissioner, you call up staff, and it's not your privilege to do that. And Ms. Hayes actually stopped you from doing that. If you have an issue with somebody, we are to go through our city manager. I ask for permission before I talk to all the department heads. Sometimes when a new coach comes in and wants to build a championship team, there are first-string players, and there are second- and third-string players. And everybody's going to have to rise up and play to that level. And if you don't, then sometimes change is hard. Because sometimes the right way's not always the popular and easy way, but it's certainly the true test of moral character. And I think we have an exceptionally strong city manager, and I support her 100%.
Does anybody that's a department head or a city employee want to volunteer that I called them up, since the city manager's been the city manager?
You've done it from the dais at every other, every other meeting. You've done it from the dais.
You're making it sound like I'm calling the city employees and department heads behind her back.
I'm not saying that. I just.
I asked to talk to Patricia, I think it was, one time, and the city manager stopped me and said, asked me the question, and then she couldn't answer, so she had Patricia answer it. So I made one mistake, and you're saying, you're going to say that that's a character flaw for the rest of my life?
I'm saying it's a trend that has continued for 11 years that I've sat here, so that's what I'm saying.
Has it happened since that day?
I'll call the question.
I'd like to say something.
Go ahead.
So I've been a resident here my whole life. And I've talked to former city managers and stuff like that, about concerns that I've had. And usually when I would talk to them, they'd acknowledge me, and they would, they would say, "Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll work on it," or whatever, but nothing would ever really get done. I'll say that since Robin's been here, I've brought up stuff to her before I was a Commissioner, and as I'm a Commissioner. And within a couple weeks, I'd say that that problem was resolved, and I do appreciate that. There is some things that, you know, that me and her have talked about that I could see that maybe we can work on, and I'm not necessarily going to mention that here, but a lack of no confidence, I just don't see it, honestly. And to bring it up at this point, Skip, I think if this has anything to do with the chief, or whatever, this is, it's not the right time. We really. Investigation needs to be completed. We need to hear all the facts. People need to be heard. And it's just the way it is. You can't say that there's no confidence when we haven't even finished our investigation. So, Robin, I thank you for your work, and I know that not everybody's going to be on the same page, you know, as far as, you know, work goes. But you're getting stuff done, and I like that. So, so thank you.
I want to say, like, I've been really, I mean, this has been on my mind 24/7 for a long time now. My issue is, it's not a question of Ms. Hayes' work ethic. I know she works very hard, but I came into concern with the decision-making process of how the investigation has been handled. For, since February, I was under the impression that I was. that the firm that was hired was an HR firm, not an attorney firm, that they don't even do investigations. They're not even qualified to do investigations. There wasn't, this firm was not even hired on a contract, which would describe the scope of what an investigation is and who's going to be investigated. Records of the investig, or of, I guess you'd call it an inquiry, because it's not an investigation, records, notes of the interviews had been shredded, which is public Interviews were not recorded. Interviewees were told that whatever they said was confidential, and that's kind of misleading, because it's really public records too. And I was, I was surprised, because I wasn't, that's not the impression I had of the case, so it really caused alarm to me. Now, now, we spent $24,000 on this investig, on this inquiry, and since it wasn't done correctly, now we're going to go do another one? And how much is that going to cost? And I know, and this isn't information from social media. This is facts, and this is, and this is a big concern from a lot of citizens that I'm hearing around our city. They've came and told me this. They're appalled that we're doing a second, or an actual investigation, and we've been do, this inquiry's been going on for three months. A lot of unhappy citizens that were spending money like this. I, I, I don't want to, I didn't want to hear this, because I really do enjoy working with Ms. Hayes, but this whole situation, and I'm reading up on articles, is reminiscent of what happened in Mount Dora, where a fire, a deputy chief was, deputy police chief was fired by Ms. Hayes, and then that resulted in separation from Ms. Hayes from Mount Dora and the city council, and then a settlement by that deputy chief of a whistleblower settlement on how that case was handled. He sued the city for $260,000. Also, a city attorney in Mount Dora was fired by Ms. Hayes. And the way I'm looking at this is not, I mean, her work ethic, I don't have a problem with that. Great with finances, I, you know, I really appreciate it, but this, this is concerning me, how this, this whole case is being handled. And to me, this, this is being handled this way, what else is being handled this way in the city? I'm looking at this as a historical and a whole-picture scenario, and it seems history's repeating itself. The way this process with this case has been handled, really, it really concerns me, and the way money's being spent. If the way it would have been handled from the beginning, honestly, does give me a lack of confidence in the decision-making that has occurred. And it's the decision-making process, and how it has led to the division and turmoil and major disruption on our city, that I have not seen the fourteen years I've lived here, the seven years I've been a commissioner here. It's going to be difficult to recover from this, whenever we do. It has become, that has been resulted from this decision-making path that I think is incorrectly handled. And now we have to acknowledge that this has happened, pick up the pieces, and we need to heal. So unfortunately, I don't want to say this, but it's just honestly how I feel. I do have a lack of confidence in the way the city manager's had handled it, and it's due to this process that was mishandled. And honestly, that's the way I feel. I'm sorry to say it, but that's how I feel.
You know, we happen to have the city attorney that handled the Mount Dora claim. He's also our labor attorney. Is anybody bothered to check with him? Did anybody call Mount Dora? If we're going to go down this path, let's get all the facts out. What were the facts surrounding that? Mr. Mandel, would you like?
You already called the question.
I, you know, this is important enough that I really want to have this conversation. You put this on the dais, sir. Robin, I would like to have Mr. Mandel speak to that.
I'm okay with that.
City manager, city attorney? I mean, also, for the record, the person that's deputy chief, who started this HR firm inquiry? Do you mind saying that for the record?
I don't really know that specific answer. Can you ask me more specifically?
Was it started by the police chief? The initial complaint that came in?
Oh, the initial complaint came from the communications center and was in reference to the chief of police. Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, that wasn't a city manager-led inquiry.
No, no, it was not, it was not started by the city manager.
Okay. And Mr. Mandel, would you please, for the record? You are our labor attorney, correct?
I have been your labor attorney for the last thirty-one years.
And you are also Mount Dora's?
I, I, Mount Dora is one of my clients. I've represented upward of seventy-five different public sector jurisdictions in the state of Florida, and Mount Dora is one of them.
And we had a conversation about this?
We did.
Would you mind just stating your quick?
Sure. And, you know, let me start with the preface that, you know, I normally get involved in the matters at the very outset through termination, and that it's often times what ends up happening is that insurance defense firms come in and they handle the actual litigation. So the situation that you're talking about here tonight dealt with the assistant city chief who had issues with the interim police chief and their whole sordid background. But anyway, I can tell you, based on my experience, that I was contacted by the personnel director there. I believe I spoke to Ms. Hayes as well about it. I was presented with the facts regarding it, and based on the facts that were presented, I thought it was an appropriate termination, under the law and under Mount Dora's policies at the time. It was, a lawsuit was filed, it was a lower lawsuit was filed, and maybe I'm desensitized to it, because that's the arena that I've worked in for the last thirty-four years. And so it is not uncommon for employees to sue after they were terminated from employment. This individual happened to have had a similar lawsuit at his prior job as well. I wasn't involved in the litigation itself. I did reach out, I tried to reach out to the attorney who handled it on behalf of Mount Dora, just to see if there was any public information that I can get, because obviously I can't share confidence. That attorney has been, has retired. I spoke to the personnel director from Mount Dora, actually, I spoke to her last night, and I asked, I said, "Look, I've known you for a long time. Tell me point-blank." You know, did Robin, pardon my French, screw up? You know? Did she cause this issue? And what I was told by the personnel director, who is now at a different city, was is that I stand by that decision that was made to terminate. She was the one that was the representative for the city in the mediation that ultimately settled. And what she told me, and I can't go too far into it, there were a lot of issues that resulted in that settlement agreement that were separate and apart from anything that anyone could point a finger at Robin. There are reasons why cases settle, you know, that have nothing to do with the facts. And based on that conversation with the HR director, I also spoke to an attorney from the firm that handled the case, and I said point-blank, you know, was it a bad termination? And the response was, "No, it wasn't a bad termination. There were other factors that caused us to have to settle, but it wasn't a bad termination." That's really as far as I could go into it.
That's fine. And I just wanted to know, for the record, what is our responsibility from a fiduciary and legal standpoint? Once these allegations have come to the surface, and I didn't want to go down this path, but now it's been brought up, what is our legal obligation?
So, under both state and federal law, you have a duty, an obligation under law, that when allegations of harassment, discrimination, hostile work environment are brought to your attention, you are required to conduct an investigation. And based upon that investigation, you're supposed to take what the law refers to as prompt remedial action, the action that's necessary to stop the harassment. The failure, the failure to conduct an investigation when facts are presented to you results in potential liability, both under Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the Florida Civil Rights Act. So, I can tell you unequivocally that, based on the allegations that were made, the city had no choice but to investigate. And I just wanted to follow up, just to make sure that everybody's clear on how this happened. The investigation didn't start with the police chief. The investigation started because the police chief had raised issues with respect to communications. And this HR group was brought in to just conduct interviews of the communications workers. What ended up happening in the course of that investigation, allegations were raised against the chief, and this firm went ahead and looked into those as well. Think as a council member said, you know, it was a disappointing result. It wasn't the result that any of us thought. We expected from our conversations with them that we were going to get something that was going to be solid, that we're going to have facts, and that we were going to make sure that at the end of the day, when we made a decision, whatever that decision is, that we could turn around and say, "Here are the facts, and this is why we're doing what we're doing." And unfortunately, that's not what happened. And so what we have done since that time is we've gone ahead and we've hired probably one of the best investigators that I've ever come across, an attorney who does great work, who will get to the bottom of it. And at the end of the day, you will have a work product that you can have confidence in to say, "This is the course of action we have to take." And so that's really where we are in that process right now. So I hope I've answered all the questions.
I had one question of our city attorney. Are HR files public record of employees that are under investigation?
Oh. Are you talking about the investigatory, investigatory files?
Yes.
Not while the investigation is active? Now, before the HR savers' reports were disclosed, we got in writing that the investigation was over, was complete. Okay.
Are we allowed to request a copy of what's in an employee's file as a city commission?
Oh, you're, okay.
I'm talking about personnel file.
You're not, you're not talking about an investigatory file?
I'm not talking about an investigation. I'm talking about doing.
An HR file?
Due diligence. Has anybody done due diligence here?
Mayor, to the general question, are HR files of city employees generally open to public inspection as public records? Yes. Yes, Sarah. There's information that would be redacted and they are pursuant to exemptions and so on, but generally, HR files are open to public records.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing your thoughts.
So the vote in front of us would be, and I would be in support of a lack of confidence, and then they would be the opposite.
Roll call? Wait, so, say that again?
The vote is for a lack of confidence. If you vote "I," you support the lack of confidence. Clarify that ahead of time. You get votes that go, people don't realize how they voted.
City clerk, is it a roll call who makes this?
It is not, but it could be if the commission chooses to.
I say, go ahead, down the line. Commissioner Hartzell?
Nay.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay. Talk to these folks up here. Get the facts. You owe it to everybody in this community to get facts. Last item, general public comment? Meeting adjourned.